Okay, if we're ready, we'd like to go ahead and get this meeting started, please. I'd like to call this session of the Town Council Meeting for July 23rd to order. If you would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the folks that are here and folks that are watching on TV. I realize that with COVID-19, there's still a lot of people concerned. As you can see, we're trying to keep our social distance. And if we can't stay within at least six feet apart, we try to keep our masks on. But, and I would urge you to do that as much as you can, anyway. By way of announcements, I only have a few upcoming Town Council Meetings. Looks like we're gonna have one pending any changes that happen tonight. Our next meeting will be August 20th. As a regular meeting here at seven o'clock. There's another meeting on Friday, August 21st, from nine to four. This will be our Retreat Goal Session to be held at Buckley's Great Stakes at 438 DW Highway. It's an all-day effort to go through lots of different detail. We'll talk a little bit about that later today, I believe. Thursday, September 10th and Thursday, September 24th are also regular Town Council Meetings. And of course, be aware that with the efforts that we're putting forward with the ordinances and things to try and reopen Wildcat Falls, we may end up having to call another meeting for public comments or whatever. And just, just keep an eye out on the website or whatever, and we'll try to keep everybody informed of those happenings. Eileen, did you have any other announcements?
Yes, we tried to keep these low-key because it's not, it's kind of a special meeting, and I don't want to ramble on. So, the Parks and Recreation Department and the Merrimack Lions Club invite you to join them tomorrow, Friday, July 24th, at 8:30 PM for the first free movie night of the summer. This year's movies will be held at Wasserman Park on the T-ball field, next to the tennis courts. The Merrimack Lions Club will be giving away Freeze Pops to attendees. Grab your blankets and your lawn chairs and join us for a fun and socially distant night out in the park to watch Star Wars: The Rise of Luke Skywalker. For questions, contact Parks and Recreation Department. I just, I'd just like to say a little bit here about what went on in Merrimack this past weekend, and has been going on for, you know, maybe at least a month or six weeks or so. I'm not really sure what's going on in the world now, but all of a sudden, people have descended upon some of our parks and recreation areas, and the things that they are doing and saying are absolutely appalling. I got a text from some, the person that was down at Watson Park. Somebody had, pardon my language, defecated in the river, seriously? The one porta potty that we had was so gross that people could not go in it. Even though we had a, basically, an attendant at the park, at, at the entranceway, a person came in, he pulled into a non, a place where it's not a parking lot, a parking spot. The attendant went up to him and said politely, you know, "This is no parking, your car's gonna be towed away." And you know what he said to him, you can imagine what he, his reply was. So again, the young man very politely said, "I'm telling you, your car's gonna be towed away." And he just basically turned around and walked up, walked away, and we towed his car. I have received, so the barrels down at Watson Park, we have six large barrels, and there were, there was trash around them that was, could have filled an entire truck. I don't know what kind of truck you call that, but dump truck.
Dump truck, yeah.
Could have filled an entire dump truck. And, and so, any of you, obviously you all are familiar with how steep and root-bound that, you know, the, the, where you walk down. There's probably like four places that people have established trails to kind of go down. Someone or a group of people took four of our part, of our, our picnic tables and brought them down there. Now that, they brought, so, and at the same time, the signs were up and people were being told that there was E. coli warnings in the water, and they didn't care, which again is fine, but I can't imagine what the readings are gonna be this week. So, I just, I, so I've received, the police departments received calls from, from the owners of the, the, the parking area or the shopping area mall, not mall, but where, yeah, I'm so sorry, but I've just frazzled. The CBS one, that people were parking there, filling up their parking lots and walking over to Watson Park. I got a call from a man who has a place of business or a, I'd rather, I'm not gonna say what, because I don't want to identify the person, but that people had filled up his part, his little parking lot and blocked off the entryway to it after they filled it with another car. And he called me and he said, "Hey," which is a cautionary tale for you, that we've been talking about, he said to me, "Hey, can I have one of those residence-only parking area, can my neighborhood be one of those?" And it's no different than, you know, the, the other one. So, I'm not sure what's happening. Wasserman Park hasn't been terribly bad, but it's not, it's, it's not as bad as that, but it's pretty gross. And the rudeness and the swearing and the, you know, bringing children down into water that's contaminated by E. coli and there's a sign there, I don't know what's going on. It's never been like that to this degree in Merrimack. And it just seems like the, I don't know if it's COVID or what it is, has brought out the worst in people. And, and it's very frustrating to us, to the employees, and certainly to the residents. So, I just wanted to kind of get that off your, off my chest. I wanted to make sure that everybody knows that we're aware of what's going on and we're doing our best against very difficult odds to try and stop this from happening. So, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Comments from the press and public? Is anybody from the press or public that want to comment to the council at this point? Go ahead. We have a public hearing coming up, so that's a separate, that's a separate discussion. Thank you. Seeing none, we'll move on, which brings us to the public hearing. So, we have a scheduled public hearing on Chapter 183 Vehicles and Traffic of the Merrimack Town Code. The Town Council will hold a public hearing to consider the acceptance of recommended changes to the Chapter 183 Vehicles and Traffic, Article III, Section Two, excuse me, Section 24A, and Section 36 of the Merrimack Town Code pursuant to Charter Article V. Eileen, did you want to launch this for us, or?
Yes, this is actually two items. It's one public hearing, but since it's under Chapter 183, the public hearing is in the same area. This deals with the proposal of a resident, a Merrimack residence-only parking area. It's the new, new proposed 183 Section 24A. At the council meeting, I'm gonna turn off my phone. At the council meeting last time, you, you added a cer, oh God, you, you added several fines in there, you added your violations in there, you added a Section B. Well, I found out after the meeting that you actually didn't have the ability to do that, because it's too substantive a matter to not have been posted. So, what is being brought forward is not the violations in this part, although we're gonna address that as well in a different manner. So, it's the, the residence-only parking, and then Number 18336 of the Town Code, which, which is, adds those streets of Courier Road parking on one side, where we tried to make sure that we get the southeast, west, and whatever. So, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to clarify.
Okay. So, we'll start with discussion on 18324. And as it's been put in our packet here, it doesn't have the changes we talked about, which was to include something about the, the, an official, to add or any other official decal designating Merrimack residency behind where it says "Transfer Station" sticker. So, we're gonna include that, we talked about it last time, and I, do you have a presentation to make, Paul?
So, yes, that should have been in there, Tom, but it was not put in there, so I, but it's fine, because it isn't substantive, so we can add it back in.
Right, it's the part that we had added in, so hopefully people were aware that we were talking about it last week, two weeks ago. And, but, it's basically saying that parking would be designated on these seven streets for Merrimack residents, and that Merrimack residents' cars would have to be designated either by a Transfer Station sticker or some official Merrimack resident sticker. And the way it was worded was, "or any other official decal designating Merrimack residency," because we may drop the Transfer Station from the sticker and just have an official sticker in the years to come. So, at that, does anybody in the council have anything they want to add to this at this point? Nancy?
I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time for discussion.
Why don't you ask him, we'll see.
We'll let you know.
I'm just trying to think how to verbalize it. Making a suggestion that the no parking be seasonal.
Thank you.
That during the, from October through April, it's not an issue. So, what I'm wondering is, could we add for those particular streets, the caveat that it will be the requirement from like May 1st through-
Or April 1st, maybe.
April 1st to November 1st. April 1st to, or October something.
Yes.
Because I think that's appropriate, I mean, that's limit set, and the part of the concern about the residents not being able to have visitors, that is a high visitor time, so it becomes irrelevant at this point, in terms of those times. So, that would solve that problem for that span of time. So, do I make a motion, or do I what?
Hang on just a second. Lon, did you want to add something? Lon, is your, is your mic on, or can you be closer to it, please? Thank you.
My concern is the language about another Merrimack resident designation. Putting that in an ordinance seems to be rather ambiguous language to me.
Or an official, or any other official decal designating Merrimack residency. Is that too ambiguous?
Do we have others at this time?
Not at this time, we don't.
No, but that was for planning for the future. If in fact, we could in fact do away with a Transfer Station sticker and just have that, which could be used for the Transfer Station, for any situation where we have to- Wasserman Park, that kind of thing. That's why that was put in there, Lon, for the future, so we don't have to readdress the ordinance in the future.
And this, when will that?
Who knows? It might be next year.
But it might be next week if I wanted to designate a car.
It would have to be an official-
As an official Merrimack residency sticker? I'm not sure what you would provide in that.
You personally can't designate one. You personally cannot do one. The council would actually have to take action and to come up with a certain thing. And I understand your point, you know, it could be that we, you know, if we decide to do that, we could just change it then, call it whatever you want, but it doesn't, it doesn't matter one way or another. Official does not mean individual council members, police chief, anybody, it means this body.
Thank you.
Peter, do you have something?
Yes, thanks. One of the things I read in some of the emails we got back from some of the residents was guests, and that, I know we've discussed it, and folks sent different things. They sent some information from various towns that deal with the same issue. And one of the things I thought was constructive was that, you know, to take some of the concern away from the actual residents, if we do this, whether year-round or half the year, would be that, you know, maybe we can add in something, some wording, just to say something to the effect of, if a resident wishes to have guests, give 24-hour notice to the Police Department, saying that there'll be a number of folks there, and maybe they could put something designating, you know, maybe they print up something on their printer, with the initials of the resident, put it in the windows of each of the cars, so if an officer gets a call down there for a parking violation, they look and go, "Okay." You know, may, you know, maybe something to that effect for that one day, that somebody has a birthday party or a family reunion or something.
Eileen?
I'm, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say this one time, so, because I don't want to come across as being, you know, pushy, but I just would like to remind everyone that the man that called me from Loop Road today, if he came in and he came to you and said, "I want residence-only for my neighborhood because of Watson Park, and I want to have my friends be able to park there so that they can have, you know, with a special sticker," it could happen all over town. We'd need meter maids, we'd need, you know, we have two officers and a supervisor on a shift for 30,000 people. And I understand that we'd like to, you know, have neighborhoods be to everybody's happiness, but I just caution you that as a Town Council, you are required by law to give everyone else the same ability. So, I just ask you to think carefully and think broadly while you make your decisions, and I'm off my soapbox.
Thank you. Peter?
Yeah, and Eileen, I, I understand that completely, and I understand the manpower with the Police Department, and I think that, I think when people come to the council or come to the town with these issues, I think we have to investigate them independently. And I think clearly, the Courier Road neighborhood, this isn't kind of a, a, a brief situation. We've had a lot of time and a lot of evidence to see that there's an issue there. Now, as far as Loop Road, or if other issues to arise as time goes on, I don't think, I don't have a problem with checking out each incident or investigating it to determine if there is a problem. And that's me personally, and that's, the other point, I guess a point of order, as I keep hearing from you, Eileen, is that we have one supervisor and three patrolmen. And I know in the budget that we just approved two positions, and the purpose was for, to create four sectors and a supervisor. And I thought that was to take care of the issue, and I know if I get the last, if I understand, we're still trying to fill those positions right now.
I'm gonna let the chief talk about that, but what I, what I believe that it was is that we were gonna hire two people to cover two of the shifts, so there would be three and one, right? There's three and one now, and so there'd be four and one on two of the shifts. So, that's what those two positions were for.
Okay, so-
So, I apologize for getting the numbers wrong, but-
No, I just was, I'm sitting, did I miss something?
That's absolutely true.
Okay, thank you.
Finley, did you have something? No. Nancy?
Yeah, I find myself between, between, Pete, because I do see what the neighbors are talking about, having the availability. I also understand the ramifications in terms of consequences in the future. So, I'm wondering if a middle ground, which I'm known for a middle ground, Nancy, if we could come to a some sort of a compromise, that we're not gonna give out, we have to be able to control it. If we take your suggestion that be prior to that date, if we had placards that could hang from the rearview mirrors, that would have to be acquired from that neighbor 24 hours ahead, for 24 hours only, and it only for that time. It's not gonna be a rambling every weekend kind of placard, then they would have to plan ahead, it would be somewhat inconvenient, but it would provide an opportunity. So, perhaps that's-
Sorry, I know I said I was gonna stop, but, but what I wanted to say is, I just wanted to reiterate what you and I had talked about, Nancy, and you mentioned at the last meeting, that in, in other places, when you're a resident and you have a beach pass, they actually put your-
License number on it.
License plate on the thing, so you can't transfer it from car to car. Or, or, it's, let's say somebody drops one, and somebody from another town picks it up and starts using it all the time, so it has to be-
It would have to be controlled. I totally agree with you. There would have to be, I'm just thinking of literally one of those hanging things that would have the address who's requested it, and literally the 24 hours good for, and then it becomes invalid. So, it can't be passed on for like the next weekend, it cannot be dropped and be utilized by somebody else, it has to be facing so that the officer can take a quick look, and you've got the identifying information right there, so.
Finley?
I'm actually just thinking of the difficulty and all that. I, this is, this is already a step above any, any other location-
True.
-as far as making it residence-only parking. I, I was envisioning, you get that sticker, they can drive, you know, the PD can drive by and see it easily, if you have to now start looking, I, I just-
It's true.
I, I get the difficulties, but this, you know, it's, it's awkward enough for me to be, you know, agreeing with the residence-only component of it all. I see the need, I am supportive of it and so on, but I, I just worry about, about the efforts that might have to go into it, the, who's giving out the placards, are they gonna go to the PD for, are they gonna go to town hall?
Exactly, I understand, you're absolutely right.
So-
I don't know.
I'm sure we'll hear more during the public hearing.
Yeah, well, you've, I'm sure gotten a lot of the emails that have been sent out by people pro and con to the whole idea of, of resident-only. I mean, everybody wants resident-only, if, if you're going to the trails, but they don't want resident-only if it's in front of their house. But, they, they don't want anybody, you know, it just, it just goes in a circle and doesn't come back. There's no solution being offered, except that they want it, but they don't want it. And I'll, I'll expand on that a little bit later as we go through this discussion, but my, my difficulty with what we're talking about doing here is trying to create that tonight, we're never gonna happen. There's a lot of complications involved, there's a lot of difficulties, there's staffing, there's, we almost need a parking division down at the Police Department to handle that kind of stuff, if we get into it and if it expands like Eileen recommends it might, to other neighborhoods and stuff like that, now we have to have an office of parking sticker guest passes or something like that, so that somebody can, and maybe that's only an hour a week or something like that, but there needs to be a program established and a, and a protocol, and a, a lot of work has to go into officiating that so that it can be tracked, I think. And, and so I don't think we're gonna accomplish that today, we could recommend it to a committee or something to try and figure out how to handle something like that, but when you look at all those examples we've gotten from Lawrence and from Concord and from other places, there's huge expenses involved in those, whether there are apps on their phones or whether they're calling into the Police Department, the Parking Regulations Department to get something, you know, and I can envision, you know, having permits with numbers and stuff on them, now we've got all that tracking, and Paul's office is gonna get swamped with that kind of stuff, but it, it just, it gets very difficult, which to me says, maybe you don't do a resident-only parking. If it's that bad for people that they can't figure out how to move out of their driveway and let somebody borrow it in order to, to visit, then, then maybe that's just not the way to go. Peter?
Tom, I, I hear what you're saying, and, and I, I'm not thrilled that we have to go down this road, but I, I think we need to do something, and I think we're, we're not a big city, I think we can deal with this situation, I, I'm in favor of moving this along, this res, non-resident parking ordinance. Part of what I think about too is, is that we've tried and we've been thinking for the last month and a half of what we can do to assist these people, and I'm thinking, if we don't do this, and we don't move anything along, and we open Wildcat Falls again, we're back to square one.
We have to do something.
But, but let me finish my thought, please, is this, the last thing I'm thinking is, is that if we put this in place, and then we find out a year from now, that the resident- and then we find out a year from now, that the residents down there are unhappy. This isn't in stone. We can amend it and take it out of the, the town ordinance. If we, if we find out it's not working, but I'm in favor of, let's try something, let's do something to try and help these people. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Barbara?
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank everyone who sent us emails. We got quite a number of them. I did try to answer all of you, and thank you for your notes. If I didn't and I missed you, I do apologize, but I did create a tracking sheet of all the responses. That being said, one of the things I saw when we went to Wildcat Falls a couple of weeks ago with the litter crew to pick up litter, is that we were all parked in the, in the drive, in the parking lot. And what we saw, as you know, I reported last meeting, was that there were three trucks that pulled up from out of state, and were beginning to want to move the barricades so they could come in as well. So I took that as slightly, we had created that scenario, because the person saw cars in the parking lot, regardless of the fact that there were signs that said the park is closed. So they figured, in my mind, oh, if they can be in there, we can too. I see that happening here as well, and we need to be prepared for that. If all of a sudden we allow parking in the street, even though it's residence-only, we have seen that there are people who will not respect that. And the next thing you know, they're going to be parking in the street as well, because they see other people. And the fact that one may have a sticker or some kind of parking permit, well, they will be oblivious to that. They won't care. And the next thing you know, we're right back where we were again. So although it may be a temporary solution, as an intermediate step to maybe finding a final solution, just be careful of that. And again, we already know that there are other neighborhoods that have equally interesting problems as this. So we may hear from them as well. So the solution needs to not only work at Wildcat Falls, it needs to work at the rest of our venues as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
I always keep saying that.
Eileen?
Okay, so what, the only thing that I wanted to say is just remember, you have two options for yourself tonight to take. So you could do the residence-only parking, or, and/or you could do the parking on one side of the street that will be enforceable. So you could do both of them, or you could do one. So just remember, if you don't decide to do residence-only parking tonight, you still have the ability to do parking on one side of the street. And Paul is going to show you what the neighborhood's going to look like with all the parking signs, no red, residence-only parking, and parking, no parking on this side of the street. And people gotta know that these signs are gonna be all over their front lawns. And it's, it will be unsightly, so...
Lon, you had a comment?
I'm gonna withdraw until I hear a little more. I will just make this one comment. I don't believe we've left square one yet.
Okay, you had a present...
If you wanna see it, if you wanna see it, then that's fine, you wanna wait until that hearing.
Why don't we wait for just a minute on the no parking, one side of the street? I, I wanted to bring that point up, that, that other portion of 183 is up for a public hearing today as well. And none of them, both of them, either or, could be adopted. And that's a lot of the reason that we asked for input from the public, to help us understand what would be the best solution. Before I go to you, Finley, one other comment is, if we make it resident-only, and two people on either side of the street decide to have a party, and they have all their guests parking in front of their house, we're gonna have the same problem we have right now, with the roads being too narrow to let people go through. So just be cautious when you're saying you wanna have people come and, and park all over your street, that you're, you're gonna create the same problem again. Finley?
I was just gonna point out with...
Okay. Any other comments from the council at this point? Peter?
Yeah, to Eileen's point, this is, this is the second meeting in this process. So, I mean, we can literally move these, all these ordinances along for one more meeting. So, you know, that's just something to be considered as well. We don't have to take it out tonight. And that gives us, what, another couple of weeks to kind of work on it a little bit. Thank you.
So we'll open the public hearing at this point, if that's okay, and at 7:36. And if there's anybody in the public that wants to address the council at this point on the 183, Section 24, no parking or resident-only parking in, on the seven streets, please, please do so at this time. You can come up, and Paul will relinquish the table. And use that mic, or you can stand at the mic behind Paul.
Good catch.
You can stand at the mic as well.
There's be an expectation now.
Yeah. I, if you did send us an email, that's fine. We're gonna read some of those tonight as well, because they're all over the map as far as Courier Road is concerned. And I just wanted to give anybody that was here in person a chance to talk to us first, before we go there. So, go ahead.
My name's Thomas Dusset, and I live at One Pine Haven Drive. We have three houses on our street. Our street is very narrow. It does have an entrance to Wildcat Falls that nobody can find, because it's been overgrown. And if you do this resident parking, we have, we have nowhere to park. Anywhere.
Is Pine Haven in the Courier Road area?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
It's down at the end of South Hegan, and it goes even with the river. There's three houses on the street.
But Pine Haven is in this list, we're talking about resident-only parking on Pine Haven, and, and what is your concern?
Well, it would have to be, we're part of the neighborhood.
What?
We're part of that neighborhood.
Right, so you are listed here. So what's your, what's your concern? I didn't catch it.
Our street has three houses on it.
Yes.
The street is very narrow. If you do resident parking or any of that, if we have visitors, we have nowhere to park, except on Pine Haven. We, we can't park anywhere else.
Okay.
We can go down a little bit on South Hegan, but we don't have the area like they have at the other side of the, where the entrance, where the parking area is.
So...
The only thing I suggest is, you close that entrance to Wildcat Falls permanently. Don't let anybody in it. There is another entrance, I've been told, down by the high school. Why can't you force everybody to park down there? They have parking lots.
They can't park down there. It's not, it's not open and available to them.
Then we need to set up a, a different entrance into the Wildcat Falls, so they're not in this particular neighborhood.
I understand that. Can you, can we address the issue of resident parking? Are you suggesting that you do not want to have...
No.
Merrimack-only parking?
No, because if, like I said, there's three houses on our street. If one of us has a gathering...
Yeah.
That's the street. If two people have it, there's no parking at all.
There wouldn't be any parking at all, whether we do this ordinance or not?
That's the thing, we don't really, we're not, Pine Haven isn't bothered by what happens down at Wildcat Falls. Okay, we're a little bit away from that. Nobody knows about the entrance to Wildcat Falls on Pine Haven Drive. And even if they got down the end of it, there's not enough parking at the end of Pine Haven Drive to walk into the falls.
So, I, I don't mean to be arguing with you, but I'm trying to understand what you're trying to tell the council. Would you prefer to have Pine Haven not on the list?
That would be fine, if we weren't on the list.
Are, are you speaking for your neighbors?
I would imagine, there's only, there's only three houses on the street.
I understand that.
I know my next-door neighbor, his girlfriend lives from Massachusetts, she's up visiting all the time. The guy that lives down the end, he's got, he's got a huge driveway. We don't. So if we wanna have a gathering, and we're not allowed to have, if you gotta be a resident to park on the street, it doesn't help us at all. That means we couldn't have any visitors at all, none.
You don't have any driveway?
I have a driveway big enough for two cars.
Well, the recommendation has been that maybe you could park on the street yourself, and let your guests use your driveway.
Okay, so I can have two visitors to my house, and that would be it.
I, I understand. There are complications, and there's no clean answer to this.
I, I understand all of that.
I definitely appreciate you coming in and telling us that. I hadn't realized Pine Haven...
You know, like I said, the only way to do it is, you just close that entrance to Wildcat Falls.
I don't know that that...
Make another entrance somewhere. I would, like I said, I didn't know you couldn't park at the high school.
Well, we've tried to talk to them about that, and they, they're not comfortable with that idea because of concerns with trespass and vandalism and various other things from, I mean, we don't have any control over that.
And then you make Wildcat Falls resident-only.
We can't do that, because it was granted to us, or it was sold to us for a dollar by the state of New Hampshire, for public recreation.
I didn't know that either.
Okay.
So, but I just...
We're, we're up against rock and hard place.
I can see that.
I appreciate the, the concerns of the neighborhood.
Trust me, I, when I was driving home, when all of this was going on, it was a pain in the neck. People parked all over the place, and I understand the problems that everybody down by that area has.
Did, did the parking problems extend down to Pine Haven?
They extended on to South Hegan.
Yes.
But not to you.
But not...
Which goes down to Pine Haven. No, because nobody can find the entrance.
And that's fine with me. And I think it's fine with you, except you told everybody there's one there now, so...
Unfortunately, they know it now. People that hike it down there, and the cross-country team from the high school.
Yeah.
Because they run those trails.
Hopefully, they don't park on Pine Haven, I mean...
No, 'cause they start running from the high school.
They start running from the high school.
And they run, they run those trails, and they come out on Pine Haven. So they know where the trail is. Other than that, nobody else knows.
Okay.
I know. Well, I mean, there's a few people that know it's there, but it's not well-marked.
I was down your neck of the woods a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Dusset, and I had a hard time finding, finding the entrance 'cause of the growth that's going on down there.
Yeah, it's all overgrown, and trees are falling, and...
It is. But I, I...
And we like it that way.
I appreciate your concern, though. I, like I said, I've been down there three or four times since we've been having this conversation, 'cause I'm trying to get a feel for the access points, so... But I, like what Chairman Koenig said, I appreciate you coming out.
All right, thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you very much. Did you have something you wanted to add, Peter?
I don't know, is it appropriate for me to...
Not necessarily, but...
No, I'll wait then. I don't wanna, you know...
Is there anybody else in the public that wants to address the... You go, no, you go.
Paul Marone, 29, Courier. I think I've spoke with quite a few of you a few times. I wrote down a couple of notes based on some of the conversation that I heard. So I just thought I would ask a couple of questions and throw out a couple of thoughts that I had. First off, I did wanna say, I said this on the phone, excuse me, the Conservation Committee meeting the other night, say it to all you guys too, police chief, the force. I, I appreciate you guys paying attention to this, 'cause when you have a front row seat, like we do, and you see it, it's right in front of your face, but when you're not there, so I, I really appreciate it. And we've had officers down quite frequently, and, you know, that helps, so I just wanted to say thank you for that. But in an effort to keep it short, 'cause many know I can go long-winded, I will say, yeah, I just thought I would remind everyone that the, um, the rea, the reason why a lot of this has come up, hasn't always been so much the parking as the volume, right? So the parking discussion has come up as a way to resolve the volume of people, you know what I mean? Like, yes, there's been some parking incidences and blocking to the entrance, emergency vehicles, things like that. But really, it's, you know, you got a dead-end cul-de-sac-type neighborhood, and right where I live, you know, you got 10 houses, 11 houses past me, and you got hundreds, hundreds of cars. It's really about the volume, you know? So I just thought I would point that out, that that's really where the challenge is. And then, obviously, from the park side of things, like was brought up earlier by Eileen, it's just not just at Wildcat, but the other places. I mean, we've just been getting like decimated with stuff, so... Those are really the two main issues. But I thought I might add, I had brought this up earlier, and I totally think that it will help the curve, or curb the situation, the April to October 31st. I don't know that we necessarily need that for the entire year. Really, the big attraction has been the falls. People jumping, people swimming, coming down with beach chairs and towels and the whole nine. I think, living there for the last five years, and then talking to neighbors who've been there for 20 or 30, that generally seems to be the challenge. So I do think that we can take a lot of the pressure off by localizing it to that. And then I also, you know, I heard the case, or the thought being made, I should say, about other areas of town, and I do see that, I get that, I understand that. So I don't know if there's any language, or I think it was Peter who said, you know, case-by-case basis. Obviously, you don't want everybody in the town wanting resident parking in their area. But I think the people across the street from Watson, and the people like us over at Wildcat, I mean, we have a very specific need for some help there. So I'm sure we can, I mean, I would hope the whole town's not looking for something like that. But, and then I also just wanted to, I took a note, when it comes to visit, maybe I'm wrong, and if, if, if there's a lot of issues I don't see, I'm always open to input. But in the amount of time that I live down there, we haven't, people do have parties, we do have guests. I believe personally, you know, one, the other, we gotta compromise a little, but maybe I'm completely off-base. But the amount of times that I see that, I don't normally see two or three people on the street having a gathering on the same day, where they're blocking both sides of the road, or, it's a couple of times a year. Is it possible, and to, I mean, the neighborhood's close, we all know each other, the, the police are down there, they know. Can we just make a phone call to the, to the police department and say, hey, we're having a party on Friday? My kids graduate in high school. We're gonna have some visitors. And just, you know, 'cause I know other towns that, you know, that do do that. So I, I mean, I don't know if that's something that we can do to relieve, alleviate the visitor problem, because it doesn't, I don't think it happens all that often, but, again, maybe I'm totally wrong. And, boy, I'll tell you, I have a hundred thousand other things I could say, but I will keep it short. And I think that was really the major points that I wanted to make. So again, I thank you all for the time, and if there's anything I can do on my end to help, I'm always available, so, thank you.
Can you, before you leave, can you just give us a definitive statement as to whether or not you support the Merrimack resident-only parking or not?
I do 100% support American. If that is our best option, I do support that. My, my biggest support would be a different entrance, but if we cannot do that for resident-only, which I know we can't do... So if we cannot relocate that entrance, and we cannot make it resident-only, then I am in support of... 'Cause I've seen, when the temporary no parking signs went up, and you could only park on one side, which that was the other note, forgive me, on one side, you could, I, I watched people come down, and there was no spot, and they, they turned around, and they left. Which is still the volume, but I know for me and many others, if you go to the same place four or five times and you can't park, you stop going. Right? If you pack your cooler up and all your bags, and, which is a whole nother thing about the falls, but if you do that, and then you can't get in, you're gonna, you're gonna go. But I did, I'm glad you mentioned that, 'cause it did make me think. So yes, I am for that, but one side, definitely, I don't even think that'll make a difference, 'cause we did that with the temporary, and it helped, don't get me wrong. But there's enough room to park, you know, a thousand cars in the whole neighborhood on one side, so that won't slow it down. It would have to be both sides of the street, all the way up. So, that, is that, Tom?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Leah St. Laurent, 32, Courier Road. We've lived there for, what, 26 years now? So we've been there for quite a while. And I know I'm coming late to the game here, and I apologize in advance. I haven't seen you guys on this topic yet. I've been busy helping family with health issues. So tonight, I guess you guys are voting on whether to make it, you're not voting?
Today's a public hearing. We can't vote on it for at least seven clear days after the public hearing. So it'll probably be two weeks.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay. So, Tom, in one of, um, obviously with the neighborhood, we do have the amount of traffic and again, when it was right-side parking only, I live on the left side of the street, so I'd go out of my parking, my garage to go up the street and because there were so many, many cars parked on the right-hand side of the street, it was hard for me to go up the street because our driveways are fairly small. And if you're trying to go up the street, but people are trying to come down the street, they're coming in my lane now because everybody's parked on the left-hand side. So, I found that a real challenge. We do have a lot of young families that are walking out there, older people too that are walking. So, that was a really challenge when it was on one side of the, the street. But I'm not sure if resident-only parking is going to help the matter either. Tom, and I did have a chance today to look at the meeting from the 6th, I believe, July 6th. And you had brought up the fact that the only reason that this is being brought up is because it's at the end of a residential neighborhood with only one way in and one way out. And then you went on to say, granted, we could build a bigger parking lot, but then we would just guarantee that we would overload Wildcat Falls with erosion, trash, and that sort of matter. And to the fact that the Conservation Commission was diligent about sizing the parking lot for that reason. So, my concern with that statement is that if you're not restricting people to just the parking lot and you're saying residents only can park in the neighborhood, then it's almost kind of like encouraging Merrimack residents to say, okay, well, you can park on the street if the parking lot's full, but nobody else can. And I kind of find that discriminatory kind of, you know, in some sort of way. But it's also not limiting the people going into the park. But then you also said the sign in the parking lot says, if it's full, go away. You just can't park anywhere. So, if that's the case, then why do we need Merrimack residence-only stated parking in our neighborhood? If the parking lot's full and people need to go away, why, why do we need to post Merrimack residence-only?
Because if they don't go away, if they park, there's no way to know that they went into the park. If, if a police officer comes by 10 minutes later, sees a car parked there, they know nothing. They can't enforce anything. They can't.
Maybe the residents can say, well, geez, there's five people parked in front of my house and I just saw them walking down to the falls. They're not guests of mine. Ticket them. And then if they were visiting people, they can go to the police station and say, you know what? I was visiting these people. Here's their affidavit or whatever. You know, it just, I don't know, it just seems that this is just being totally blown out of proportion. If the parking lot's full, it's full and people should go away. If they're parked on the side of the street.
That's what the sign says today.
Then, then.
And there's no way to enforce that, is my point. Right? And what we're looking for is some way to enforce something. And, and people have said they, they, well, they've complained a lot about Massachusetts plates or, or Vermont plates or Maine plates or something like that.
Well, we can't get into that either. All right, now I'm going to put my Realtor hat on. Okay, because I am a Realtor, so I have to put that into the, the ballgame too. And the fact is that, okay, so I live at 32 Courier and I want guests to come over, you know, and I don't have enough parking. Well, now they can't park on the street because it's New Hampshire residence-only. I just recently sold the house on South Heagan. The, but one of the buyers came from Maine. She's got family in Maine. He's from Nashua. If their family comes, if they don't have parking in their driveway, they can't have people there. To me, that's a negative, it's an adverse, you know, defect on the property. So, by putting this ordinance in place, you're really giving us all a restriction on our personal property. When we go to sell property, there's a four-page, page, property disclosure that we're supposed to give to a buyer that is, is to let them know about the property, what you know, and any defects about the property. To me, if I'm moving into a neighborhood, I would want to know if there are parking restrictions on the street because in all of Merrimack, we don't have this anywhere. But in these seven streets, we, we now would. How is that, that information going to get conveyed? And how is it going to get perceived by the public? Right now, when I market a property in that neighborhood, I'm like, this is a great property. People love it because you can walk to Wildcat Falls. You put, you put restrictions on parking, you can't park in front of your house? That's not a good thing. And like Eileen said too, is if you make this, or if you put this in place for this neighborhood too, you have to really be careful about other neighborhoods and how it's going to affect. So, I think it's kind of premature right now to make this decision. And I know everybody, you guys are probably getting so pressed for trying to open things back up because I'm sure you're under a lot of pressure, but I think it's premature to just put something out there and see how it works. That's all. And also, the only reason I know about this meeting tonight, I mean, I saw on the July 6th meeting, talked about NICSIL, talked about messages to residents. Again, I've been in and out with personal issues, so I haven't heard. And I had to find out on Facebook from, from a Facebook webpage. So, that kind of didn't sit well. Just because there's so many dynamics involved, you know, I think all of the residents should be notified in writing as to what's going on. And I think Finley, you're the one that brought that one up too, so I appreciate that, on trying to notify all the residents. So, I appreciate that.
Right, and I, I, this is not what I was going to speak to, but as bad as social media can be, it, it is a benefit. I mean, it's posted, there's legal ways where you have to post public hearings and the such. And that, you know, the NICSIL is an added way. That's just one little thing that we have that we utilize. But the social media that it gets out that way is, I think it's beneficial and I'm glad that you were able to hear about it.
Did a NICSIL go out? Because I have NICSIL going and I didn't.
I don't know. I don't know if it did or not.
So.
No.
No, so.
So, but we normally try and use all those avenues to notify people because it's difficult. Everybody is busy. Um, I was just wondering if you could tell me, this is a dilemma for me because I'd rather just leave a thing open, but I've seen the carnage that goes on
Right.
with people who are just slobs. And, and I understand Eileen's frustration in her tirade earlier this evening, although I won't call it a tirade, but. But I'm wondering if the, if the, if what I, so passion, yes. I, I'm a visual guy. I always say that I have to go see things. So, I've driven down into the neighborhood a couple of times, few times and to check it out myself. And it was disgusting, the garbage in the parking area, the 12-pack carriers all over the place. I'm wondering if, if a lot, if keeping things the way they are, would that have a detrimental effect on values of properties there also? Because I think it would.
I don't know that. I think if the parking is enforced somehow, if we can try and find a way to, I mean, when the whole, everything with the whole COVID thing, obviously this year, we've always had problems in the summertime, you know, with kids going out there and always, you know, that, that's a given. We get that. And we've had trash issues and neighborhood cleanups and stuff like that too, and that's okay. You know, but just the level, you know, of it this year, and I think it was because of the pandemic. You know, but is that the way it's going to be going forward? I don't know. Can we try opening up again to see what happens? You know, maybe that's a good thing. If we have issues again, should we close it again until we can find a solution to it? I just think by put, by changing the code, to me, that, that is kind of like a, it's a pretty permanent thing. And I just, you know, worry about the adverse, you know, impact on our properties.
I, I completely agree with that.
And I don't know if that's brought up, any, anybody has brought that up, in that perspective.
Consequences that I always fear. The, this, to jump on something on Peter's suggestion of having a way for people to get this temporary card, I just see it as a potential nightmare for our different departments. And so, I'm, I, the more I hear, I'm generally inclined to just not do a thing because I think you might be right. I think the pandemic has created this nightmare because I know it's been busy before, but it, it's just outrageous what we've experienced, so. I don't know. I, I don't believe in closing it to, to the public. It is one of our gems that I'm, I'm proud to have in town and I think it should be utilized by our citizens. I thought the residential only, Merrimack resident-only parking would be beneficial. But right now, I'm, I'm teetering on not doing anything. But I appreciate your input and, and recognize those potential unintended consequences that we would have to deal with from that point forward, so.
And wasn't there also talk with the Conservation Committee about Watson Park being another access to that area by, by them expanding and having all the trails?
It would, but it's a great distance and I think the trail system is something that is just a vision for the future, yeah.
Okay, all right, that's all. Thank you for listening, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the public wishing to address the council? We're going to figure out which ones, which ones need to be read, I guess. We have to sort through them.
So, it was a worthwhile meeting.
Do you want to close your public hearing?
Hmm? No. We need to, we need to do some testimony here from other people.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is that one on the Merrimack resident-only?
Yes, they all are.
Okay, so we have a letter from Gracie, Grace Fairbain. I think that's how you pronounce her name, at 35 Courier Road. She's saying, hi, and thank you all for your hard work. The plan you have below will not work for us. We have to be allowed to have our personal out-of-town guests be able to park on the street in front of our homes without the threat of a ticket. You cannot single out our neighborhood for residence-only parking and not make this allowance. It is discriminatory and unfair to all of us living on Courier Road and the surrounding streets. I would like to strongly suggest that the ordinance you proposed to be modified to include the exception for personal out-of-town guests be known by signage in the window. We should be allowed to host graduation parties and wedding receptions and other family gatherings. The parking lot for the trail was created to alleviate additional parking on the street for trail access. It was not built to have additional parking flow onto the street. Once that lot is full, the people should be utilizing one of the many other areas in town. There should be a sign stating there is no trail parking allowed on the streets and please utilize another park, public park in town or return later. Once we have the other access points set up, the sound, sign could be modified to reflect where the new parking and access points are located. For a long-term solution, we heard a proposal last night of the possibility of a new out-of-town and residential parking area along with a new pedestrian footbridge to be built by the ballfields on the opposite side of the river. That seems like the perfect solution for the overflow. The estimated cost was around $1.5 million. A fundraising committee should be formed for that purpose of a long-term solution. This would solve everything. Again, many thanks. I don't know how we're going to raise one and a half million, but.
But she's talking, put the, you know, just talk about a fundraising committee. And anecdotally, Mr. Chairman, Peter Alver and I spoke with Eileen about that particular prospect when we were having this conversation. So, the price tag is significant, but the, the concept, I don't think is a bad one. I think it's a very good one.
She also sent a letter on July 10th, which says the same thing. That one was from July 21st. Do you have anything on the?
Yes, they do. This is a, an email from Tiffany Cross that reads, dear council members, I'm writing on behalf of a group of residents from Courier Neighborhood. Due to COVID-19, many of us cannot attend the public hearing tomorrow night because of being at high risk. We ask that the attached letter be read or at least considered in your debate. If you need any more information or assigned physical copy, please let me know. Thank you, Tiffany Cross. Dated 21 July 2020 to the Merrimack Town Council, Merrimack Town Hall, 6 Papooseclic Road, Merrimack, to the members of the Merrimack Town Council and the town manager. We are writing to you regarding our strong opposition to the proposal to change the ordinance to make all the roads in the Courier Road neighborhood parentheses Courier, Hemlock, First, South Heagan, Birch, Tiffany, and Pine Haven either no parking or town resident parking only. We truly would like to thank you for listening to our neighbors and for your willingness to try and dissolve the problems that the increased use and traffic at Wildcat Falls has brought to not only our neighborhood, but to the trails and entire conservation area as well. Although we realize that the majority of the problems were caused by out-of-town and mostly out-of-state visitors, it is unfair to punish us because of it. The proposed ban and ordinance change will impact our daily lives. As most houses in our neighborhood are only able to fit two, three, or four cars at most in our driveways, those of us who have large families and many friends or are not Merrimack residents will no longer be able to have gatherings with out-of-town guests. Not to mention out-of-town contractors, landscapers, street service or repairmen, whose trucks will not fit in our driveways. What about friends and family who are Merrimack residents that never go to the dump and do not have dump stickers? Will they be ticketed as well? Please think personally about how many gatherings you will have with more than three or four cars. Events such as holiday dinners, birthday parties, barbecues, pool parties, graduation parties, et cetera, even if it's only a few times a year, please think about not being able to hold these gatherings as you always have. Many of us have lived in the neighborhood for over 50 years, long before Wildcat Falls was made into public trails and the parking lot was put in. Some of us are second and even third generation to live in this neighborhood as many have either inherited, purchased their parents' home, or are living multi-generationally. We either grew up or came to this neighborhood with the freedom to have gatherings like everyone else in this neighborhood has. We do not have a neighborhood association. We do not have an, we do not limit a condo complex with visitor parking. We do not live in a big city with public transportation. We did not purchase our homes knowing that guest parking would be an issue. Chose to live in a quiet neighborhood with big yards and the freedom to decide to have gatherings with whomever and whenever we chose. We enjoy Wildcat Falls and miss walking there as much as the other towns, town residents do. However, they do not live here, we do. We pay the same taxes as everyone else in, in this town. Why do they get to have a say in how we live our lives? Why do their wants come before ours? There has to be other solutions than by punishing us. Even large cities offer guest passes and considerations to the residents to have gatherings, out-of-town guests and service vehicles. The fact that we, who are directly affected, were, were given no official notice, that no consideration was given to the impact on our lives, the fact exemptions and passes are not even being considered is very disheartening and upsetting. Especially as, as it was made very clear that everyone was going to be ticketed. It feels like because we asked for help with problems arising, it feels like because we asked for help with the problems arising from the increased use of the park, basically the attitude is you get what you ask for. We ask for a safe neighborhood, that's, that is all. We all support our neighbors on Furr, Hemlock, Courier Roads. We take the brunt of the speeding and pro- problems and very much want a solution that is fair to all, gives us quality of life, but also does not put unfair restrictions on our neighborhood. Restrictions that are not put on the other residents of our town. We know from social media that they want the park reopened, but they did not care about the issues we faced when the park was packed. Nor do they care at all about our, about how changing the ordinances restrict those of us who live here. We strongly oppose these changes to our neighborhood at all, but especially without any thought to the considerations other cities and towns give their residents with parking restrictions. We ask that you not penalize those who live and raise their families in this neighborhood for the sake of other Merrimack residents' recreation. Signed by the Falling Courier Road Neighborhood Residents. Helen Cross, 34 South Heagan Drive. Martha Bailey, 27 South Heagan Drive. Gina and Tom Dusset, 1 Pine Haven Drive. Sherry and Mark Bailey, 33 South Heagan Drive. Dawn Ward, 32 South Heagan Drive. Patricia Worthing and Shane Bishop, 9 Birch Street. Kyle and Lauren Bristol, 12 Birch Street. Dan and Abigail Bergman, 29 South Heagan Drive. Diana and Lance Simmons, 25 South Heagan Drive. Lana Levake and Ken Lowe, 11 Birch Street. And Tara and Elijah McKenny, 3 Tiffany Lane.
So, that was clearly against the Merrimack only resident parking.
I think it was very clear.
Um, I have a letter here from Rick Schroll, Rich Schroll, of 6 Hemlock Street. And he added, this neighborhood is an older neighborhood with more narrow streets than many others. It was built for traffic to and from homeowners. The trail was enjoyed by local neighborhood homeowners and townspeople alike for many years. Then it was promoted and advertised, which created a draw beyond the limits of our town. Many of these visitors, and on some days, most of them, were from out-of-state. Questions worth considering to help direct our actions for resolution. One, what is the purpose of the trail? And he offers an answer. It is there for citizens to enjoy the natures, the, the nature that's there and continue a healthy relationship with the land. Two, who is the intended and/or expected user of the trail? The citizens of Merrimack. It is human nature to take more care of your own than what something that is not, than when something that is not. Number three, what is the reasonable number of visitors to the park each day that will not stress and overload the nature that is there? And he answers, I understand the parking lot was sized to limit the likely negative impact on the trail from too many visitors on any given day or consecutive days. Allowing overflow from the parking lot onto the streets contradicts this notion and enables that very risk, which was clearly recognized and experienced through the first half of this year. Trash built up and wildlife moved out. Four, how much traffic is reasonable for the size of the streets in the neighborhood to ensure a safe environment for the homeowners there? And he answers, the more traffic allowed statistically, the higher the incidence of speeding, reckless driving and unwelcome behavior such as illegal parking, urinating in lawns and the fighting in the streets. All of these were proven this year so far. Goes on, the root of the problem is the amount of traffic allowed into the neighborhood. If that's, if that, after that, it's the origin of the citizen revisiting. A reasonable approach would be to restrict parking to the limits of the parking lot there and limit the visitors to residents of Merrimack only. This motion would limit the type and amount of traffic that visits Merrimack's natural trail resource on a daily basis. As reinforcement, parking in the streets would be limited to use by the residents that reside and pay taxes in the neighborhood. As reinforcement, parking in the streets would be limited to use by the residents that reside and pay taxes in the neighborhood. This could be delivered in the form of official passes issued by the town to residents in the, in the neighborhood. I've heard a note of conserv, conserv, conservatism in how we approach this as a community, preferring a broad swath of ordinance and regulation in hopes of circumventing shortcuts or corrupting, corruption of the process we put in place in order to, quote, 'get it right,' unquote, the first time. This, however, would be a mistake just as much as not getting it right the first time, or potentially worse. I'm reminded of an old colleague's words, quote, 'Do you want to be right, or do you want to be successful,' unquote. Penalizing the people that live there, reducing their rights and privileges should not be an acceptable solution. It's not an easy situation, and regardless of how we got here, we're here. Starting with the end in mind and moving in that direction, taking care to not infringe on the citizens that live here is the right thing to do, even if it takes longer than desired or requires revisiting it and making changes. I would add that adding additional access points from another location, which was my original argument, would enable the high volume of traffic and access from unintended visitors that don't all respect the purpose of the nature preserve. Again, the amount and type of visitors is what matters to the health of this preserve and the citizen's safety in the neighborhood. Thank you very much. Sincerely, Rich Schroll." I want to point out, all of these are individual comments, not necessarily endorsed by the council or even vetted by the council as far as some of the accuracies are concerned. But these are what people have to say regarding the situation.
Do you want me to say a couple more?
Yeah, it's just, we have a lot of these, some of them pertain directly to the, the issue that we're discussing now. I don't want to have to read a bunch of stuff out of order, so we're trying to sort through them. Yeah, go ahead and read that one.
Thank you. Okay, this is an email from Ursula Gall, Wednesday, July twenty-second, twenty-twenty, to the town council. Dear council, dear town council members, thank you for your continued efforts in keeping our neighborhood safe while trying to find the best solution for our neighborhood in Wildcat Falls Conservation Area. As you approach your final vote in creating a new ordinance to resolve the parking issues along Courier Road Neighborhood and in the WFCA parking lot, I have faith you will do the right thing. I feel strongly our safety is paramount. Please consider one side of all streets, no parking, and for Merrimack residents only, which I, which will need enforcement as part of the solution. Merrimack has been our home for fifty-eight years, and we still wouldn't want to live anywhere else. Sincerely, Hubert and Ursula Gall.
Go ahead and read that one.
Okay. This is from Diane Hancock, sent Tuesday, July twenty-first, individually to the council members and town manager Cabanelle. And she writes, "Hello. I'm writing because I am concerned about the prospect of my neighborhood becoming resident parking only. I've lived by Wildcat Falls for seventeen years, and I have lots of family and friends who visit often. I'm not sure how this would work. I know people who live right next to the falls have had many issues, but I, I don't think making life hard for the rest of the neighborhood is the answer. I look forward to hearing other solutions. One of the reasons we chose this neighborhood was because of Wildcat Falls. We do miss it and do want to do what's best for the preservation of it. Thank you. Diane Hancock, Nine South Egan Drive."
And this one's from Shannon Lazaro. It was dated the twenty-first to the town council. "First, I would like to say thank you. Thank you again for helping our neighborhood have some relief from the traffic and problems that we've been hap, that have been happening at Wildcat Falls. We've been enjoying our neighborhood so much the last four weeks. My children have been able to ride bikes and scooters with neighbors. They can walk our dogs again. It's been wonderful. I heard from Peter last night during the conservation committee meeting that the town council wants to hear from Courier Road residents and hear our thoughts regarding the ordinance. I am not a hundred percent on board with residents only and feel like we should be able to have guests visit our home without restrictions. Please consider adding a date of April first to October first. Also, please consider a way we can differentiate our guests from overuse of Wildcat Falls guests. I also hope enforcement of non-residents on the road will be done. We cannot get this out of control again. If we open, Wildcat Falls has to be managed and enforced. I also believe that a long-term solution needs to be made for parking outside of residential neighborhood, of a residential neighborhood. Please consider exploring more solutions for the long term. For example, a footbridge from DPW area to Wildcat Falls, or an entrance that connects to a lot near the high school."
Okay, this is dated Tuesday, July twenty-first, from Pamela Susie. And she writes, "The wording is completely wrong. Can't say Merrimack residents only with no mention of visitors slash guest parks, guest parking. Going to have same problem if reopening in August. Out-of-town people will think they can park anywhere when parking lot, when parking lot full. Considering now there's a town issue with people parking in Cornell Parking Lot, walking to Watson Park, disrespectful of areas, and I apologize that the message is truncated. Please reconsider wording. Make Courier Road no parking for people going to trails. There's a specific lot for parking when full they, when full then leave slash come back. Can't reopen as-is. Can definitely see pending lawsuits against town in event of fire police having no access. Thank you. Sincerely, Pamela Susie."
This one's going to be hard because she goes through all kinds of stuff.
Do you want me to take a look at that?
Yeah, see, see how much of that we need to.
Don't you?
Let me, uh.
Finley?
This is from Amy Sim, Finley?
I, I didn't know, I, I don't know if you had, you know, counted out, seen the pros, the cons, and the little different, no?
No, I didn't.
All right, no, I, because I didn't know if you were going to be reading through all of them.
I'm trying to read through all of them, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I think the problem, Finley, is, um, people don't really have, uh, don't necessarily have a solution. And to think that there's, you can put up a sign at Wildcat Falls saying that if you're a visitor and not a resident, uh, you can't park here if the parking lot's full, is not enforceable. So, um, I, I just, um, want, want, I, I think the council is just, um, very, feels very frustrated because, as Tom said, there just really isn't a solution. So, some of these emails, um, are somewhat contradictory. I want this, but I don't want this, but I want this, but I don't want that. So I don't think there's a way to kind of check off and say in favor or not.
Um, I have one here from Amy Semino. Says, "Dear Town Council, good morning. I reached out to the former chief of police from Deering, who implemented a successful ordinance that could be of value to us. I'm sharing this in hopes it could provide some guidance for our ordinance. There are some key ways we could potentially handle Merrimack's parking issue. Parking stickers, day-use passes, enforcement and penalties. If you'd like more information, don't hesitate to contact me." She also wrote a letter to.
What town, what town did she?
She said Deering. And she included the ordinance, which, they have a beach parking sticker ordinance, which I think we all got. But it, um, it, it's, it's very substantial. It, it makes our ordinance look trivial. But it also, like I said with some other things, it, it has a complete parking regulation department. And they, they sell day passes and they sell month passes and they do all kinds of things of that nature, which I think is above and beyond where we can handle with this issue. But we could certainly review it and talk about it maybe at our retreat as to whether we want to try and go down that, that avenue to enforce parking at Watson or at Wasserman or in the area of Wildcat Falls and stuff like that. But it, it is here and, and we can, we can certainly review it. She also sent a letter to the Conservation Commission, I guess. I don't know if it was read during Andrew Dwayne's public comment. "My name was misrepresented as being against a parking ban along the street. In fact, I have actually brought up residence-only parking as a long-term solution for the Courier Road Neighborhood and Wildcat Falls when I started a petition to preserve Wildcat Falls for four months ago. It's important for me to make sure everyone is aware. My best interest is in the neighborhood and Wildcat Falls. For the proposed ordinances the town council is to vote on, please note, I do support one side, no parking along Courier Road and all side streets. I also support Merrimack resident-only parking in the parking lot and/or along neighboring streets. Enforcement will have to be part of the solution as well. Again, thank you for your time and your efforts in doing what's best for our community. Amy Semino." Which, so I. I, I think she supports resident-only parking, but she doesn't address the other issues that people have brought up.
I can work, I can work with that.
You can work with that one, at least summarize for us.
Absolutely, be happy to. This is from Brennan Hanson, dated Tuesday, July twenty-first, twenty-twenty. Ms. Hanson, if you're watching, I'm just going to hit the high points, but the entire letter is going to be entered into the public record, just so that you know that. She writes, "Hello. I'm writing once more to the town council with recommendations to address the safety and traffic issues we've seen on Courier Road as a result of Wildcat Falls parking lot being located in our residential neighborhood. As a town parking ordinance is being discussed this week, I wanted to share my feedback with you. I am a resident of the neighborhood living up at the top of the road and a formerly avid walker at Wildcat Falls. Every single car that goes to Wildcat Falls, whether it parks or not, passes by my house twice. I encourage the town council to, one, keep Wildcat Falls closed until enforceable ordinances are in place. Two, prioritize getting ordinances in place as soon as possible so Merrimack residents can enjoy and care for Wildcat Falls. Three, make the entire Courier Road Neighborhood Merrimack resident parking only and enforce it. Fines need to be aligned with fines in states from where we see most plates in order to be effective." She provides a, a schedule of fines. Four, provide a method of home, provide a method for homes located in resident parking only areas to allow for authorized visitor parking out front of homes. She offered several solutions in this regard. Number five, if possible, to keep safe and clean, open Wildcat Falls back to the public. However, limit access to the property from a non-residentially located lot. Again, provides direction and a specific, specific fine schedule. Ms. Hanson then goes on to highlight other communities that have similar, uh, permit parking and fine schedules that they use to deter illegal parking. She points out that a family of five can visit Newfound Lake for twenty-five dollars a day, and that anything equal to or less than that would be no more than, quote-unquote, "park admission." And I agree with her, it would not deter someone from paying the fine. She closes her letter by writing, "If police enter or parks in rec field, they cannot patrol the neighborhood land or enforce ordinances, it would be both dangerous and neglectful to open back up, it would be dangerous and neglectful to open it back up to the non-Merrimack public. Making the entire Curry neighborhood, Courier Road neighborhood and lot Merrimack resident parking only is the only way to solve the traffic and safety issues. Addressing the roads but not the lot would simply result in continued traffic, speeding, trash, people turning around, road rage, disrespect, et cetera. Lastly, if speed limits are being discussed, I'd like to urge the town to mandate a twenty-five mile per hour limit in residential neighborhoods throughout town. As always, thank you for your attention to this very urgent matter. Brennan Hanson, Three Courier Road."
Um, and I have one here from Jerry Saint Amant that I wanted to go through. He had expressed some frustration that his previous comments hadn't been included in the minutes. So I'm going to read a letter that he wrote to Mr. Kaniga and Mr. Boyd back on the twenty-third of June, and then I'll follow up with his recent letter that he sent in. Says, "At their recent meeting on June twenty-second, the Merrimack Conservation Committee members voted unanimously in support of a proposal to request that the Merrimack Town Council discuss and approve having the Wildcat Falls Conservation Area closed for a period of time. I want to express my strong support for this recommendation and hope the town council will consider it seriously. My family has lived at Thirty-One Courier Road for thirty-eight years and has observed firsthand the benefits and detriments of abutting this lovely conservation parcel. Since the unanticipated arrival of COVID-19, this hidden Merrimack gem has gained tremendous popularity from residents and visitors. The most recent changes have extended beyond the Wildcat Falls area and into the neighborhood. Notable increases in traffic speed, parking, and questionable activities have become routine in the neighborhood, creating safety concerns for everyone. I take regular advantage of Wildcat Falls and would, will miss walking through and viewing the wildlife, birds, and plants that make the Wildcat Falls Conservation Area a property in which the community has, in the past, been able to take great pride. Time plays a critical role in moving forward. Since this area and its neighbors need your support in bringing about essential changes to make Wildcat Falls Conservation Area and the Courier Road safe and enjoyable for residents and visitors alike." That's from Jerry Saint Amant. And then he sent another letter asking us to include this in the meeting tonight. "Dear members of the Merrimack Town Council, as you begin consideration of public feedback about the proposal to modify parking in and access to the Wildcat Falls Conservation Area and the Courier Road Neighborhood, I appreciate your time, effort, and energy in considering input from neighborhood and town residents. My suggestions are listed below. One, refrain from placing any parking restrictions or signs on any of the streets in the neighborhood until additional traffic data can be gathered." Doesn't specify what that traffic data involves. "Two, provide several trash receptacles in the WFCA with scheduled regular trash removal. Three, consider expansion of the parking lot to accommodate community needs and access if future data collection supports an increase in parking spaces. Four, place signage at the entrance to Wildcat Falls to inform visitors that once the parking lot is full, on-street parking will be prohibited and violators may be towed. Five, focus on the safety of all visitors, neighbors, and wildlife when discussing and considering any changes. Six, determine if the Wildcat Falls area will be accessible to everyone or to Merrimack residents only. And seven, discuss the pros and cons of reverting to the previous name of the conservation area, quote-unquote, eighty acres. The COVID-19 pandemic has brought increased use and abuse to the Wildcat Falls Conservation Area and its surrounding neighborhood. Interest in the area will likely diminish once, quote-unquote, 'normal routines' return. Sincerely, Jerry Saint Amant." And I think that covers all of the emails we were able to print out. I don't know if anybody's noticed whether we've received anything else since the meeting started or not. Peter, did you have something you wanted to add?
Just briefly, you know, if you look on this, the existing town, roads in town that we've placed no parking, complete no parking, um, you know, I, I looked down this list, and yeah, granted, some of them are DW highways, some of the outright big roads, but some of them aren't. You know, I'm looking at Columbia Circle. We have no parking there. There's not, we haven't had an issue yet. It's not even, it's not even resident parking. We're looking at, well, Hadley Road, um, and we're looking at that later tonight. Loop Road, Loop Road is pretty much closed off completely to any parking. And there are several houses there, and we haven't had an issue. Again, and this is no parking completely. Camp Sergeant Road, that's a long stretch of road with, pretty much of all residences. And I, I, I haven't seen an, an issue there. So this is, when we consider what the issues might be, I mean, to me, I'm looking at these, and we've had a long, long time to deal with these roads that, that this council and the Board of Selectment, not this one, but councils and boards of selectmen have, have prohibited all parking. So, I mean, that, to me, that's some consideration, maybe, when we think, we're thinking about what's happening on Courier Road Neighborhood.
Okay, is there anybody else that wants to address the council at this point in our part, at this point in our public hearing on Section twenty-four, resident-only parking? No? You can, yeah? Okay. This is your chance. Yeah, you got to come up.
Just for the record, give us your name again. Twenty-nine Courier, again. I just thought, I heard some things from the emails and such tonight from a few people that I haven't had the chance to speak with. But I just thought I might add this if it helps at all. We, I have been talking with as many residents as I can, and there are a few who I haven't seen in a while, that I, you know, may not have totally come in contact with. But point is, we've been talking about this since March, April, right? I just thought earlier, Tom asked me a very direct question. Are you in support of resident-only parking in the area? And I gave an answer to that, and I still support that answer. But I just thought I might, I really wanted to make sure that everybody understood this, that lives in this, in this neighborhood, that we've discussed and thought about a million other different options that we can do. I don't want resident-only parking in my neighborhood either, but I believe it's the best thing we got right now to resolve both. but I believe it's the best thing we got right now to resolve both issues, you know? Because originally I had thought, let's do resident-only parking just at our end of the street, but then what do we do? We push our problem all the way up to everyone else, right? So, I always knew we have some residents that live further up the neighborhood that might say, hey, this is a pain in the butt, but I can assure them and all of us that if we did it just at our end, give them a couple of weeks and they'll be calling saying, put the sign out in front of my house. It's not fun, it's not what I wanna do, but I just, we have to do something, and I know we've all talked and worked hard. And if I had a better option or a better thing, so, I, I still think it's our, our best option, April to August. But it is a tough decision, thank you, I just wanted to say that one more time.
Thanks, Barbara.
Sir, could I just ask you a question? And all of you who come from that area, is there a lot of traffic there in April, or does it begin to heat up around Memorial Day?
Can you, can you come to the mic, thanks?
I can say this, the first beautiful spring day the last couple of years, as soon as that day comes, I find myself saying to my wife, get ready, they're coming, right? Like, so, I mean, we gotta compromise somewhere, if you, you know, if we had to go Memorial Day to Labor Day, as far as I'm concerned, it's, it's better than what we have.
Yeah, I just wanted, I just wanted to validate with you guys that, yeah, the minute it gets nice in April.
That, that's when it seems to hit.
Folks start hitting the park.
Is that the day it starts, or is that the day you know that it's gonna start?
Well, I mean, it.
So, I mean, it's maybe April 15 to October 15, or something like that.
Yeah, somewhere around, you know, not for nothing, we can all, I shouldn't say all, just be for myself, but many of us, we can handle a weekend or two, you know? It's really become a problem when it's like, you know, every day, right? So, yeah, that's.
And, and that's part of this COVID-19 thing, with so many people working from home, it can almost be every day now where, before, all the workers were off.
And I, and I also think that somebody mentioned this earlier, you know? This doesn't mean this is something we do forever. Maybe it's something we do for a year or two until we come up with a different entrance, or we, whatever, you know, whatever else we can work, we put it in, it doesn't work, we fix it, you know? But I feel it's worth a good try, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Just a, just a comment to amplify what Council Healy was going after. I would argue that visitors going to Wildcat Falls in the months of April and May are a different type of visitor, i.e. they're wearing hiking shoes or running shoes to go in there, they're not gonna be wearing a, a one-piece bodysuit going in there to, to go swimming. You know, it's, you know, the, the, the visitors that have been using Wildcat Falls are the people that are, you know, looking, looking for a place to cool off. So, I, I think Council He, Healy's point is, is well-taken that, you know, maybe it's the summer months from, whether it's Memorial Day to Veterans Day, Memorial Day to.
Labor Day.
To Labor Day, something like that. I mean, I think you have to, and, and this isn't to, to diminish the, the issues that, that the neighborhood has had, but I think people going to hike and, you know, do some walking or do some running is, is a dramatically different use from people that are walking down with their.
Coolers.
With their coolers, their barbecue, the, the floaties, you know, their, their Wham-O, I mean, you know, the, the beef, the, the water noodles. I mean, it's a totally different dynamic from the users out of there in April and May, so, thank you.
Does anybody else have any comments they wanna add? Well, we're gonna close the public hearing at 8:35. I don't remember when we opened it, an hour ago. 59 minutes ago.
Can I ask, can I ask Eileen a question?
Maybe.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Eileen, did we get a legal opinion regarding how we are able to use Wildcat Falls? Or are we just relying on the language that's in the deed?
Well, the legal opinion is an opinion, so it's not definitive, but according to Carrie, our attorney, she said, with the language in the deed where it says, for the enjoyment of the general public, having had it given to us by the state of New Hampshire, another governmental agency, it's, it, it defies logic that you would be able to win a challenge where somebody said that it's for residents only, so.
You gave us a copy of the deed tonight.
Yep.
Okay. And the, the, the conveyance, the reads, the conveyance is made subject to a restriction that said tract of land shall be used for park or recreation purposes only. That's, that's it. There, there's no language in here that's requiring the state for us to say it's open to everybody. There's no language in here that says that the town can't put, put a caveat or a restriction on it to, so. I, I have a, I have a difference of opinion regarding how Carrie is approaching that, based on how I'm interpreting what, what's in the deed that came from us, from the state some 50 years ago.
So, if it were a bequest from an individual, they could put whatever restrictions they want. But if the government owns a piece of property and they give it to another government, it's not meant to be given to the residents of that area. It's, if you wanted to make it New Hampshire residents only, that's another question. But for, you know, the state of New Hampshire did not give it to the citizens of Meramec, regardless of, it is given to the town of Meramec, but it, it, the, the state, the state can't do that. They're a government, they can't, they can't restrict it to, they can't hand out 80 acres of land for free to a specific town and not allow any other residents of the state in particular, it just doesn't make sense.
But they, but they didn't say that, they, they didn't say that, Eileen. The, the state gave it to the town, the town said, we don't want you to develop it, we want you to use it as a park or for recreation purposes.
You can do whatever you want, the advice is no.
Question is, how's the, how's the judge gonna respond if somebody comes and challenges, from Nashville, that comes and challenges? And the judge is likely to read it the way the attorney has read it, that the state can't preclude other members of the state from using it by giving it to a town. That it's, that stuff the state has is owned by the members of the state, which is residents of the state, right? I mean, I understand what you're saying.
Correct.
And, and I've read legal things before and, and interpreted them completely based on the words there and had the judge totally change that based on their own interpretation of those words. More than once. So, I'm not about to think that a judge wouldn't make his own decision, and it might not, I mean, and, and there's every reason to believe it could be held up in the Superior Court, Supreme Court, that, that they would say the state's, just doesn't have the authority to take it away.
I guess the, the question I would ask my colleagues, i- is it worth writing a letter to the AG's office for an advisory? I don't, I don't dismiss what our, what our legal counsel is saying, but if it's, if it's contingent upon the intent of what the state gave to us, then it kind of, to me, it raises the question, ta- take it to the next, take it to the next level. Can, can we get advisor from the AG and get their interpretation as to what they think, that they, what they think it is? Or how, how we should be approaching this particular issue? Because, you know, I think that the remedy is, is a, is a short, is a short-term stopgap of, of maybe potentially making Wildcat Falls resident only, i- if we can do it, it would be something that I would, I would wanna, I would want the council to consider. But, you know, I mean, there's so many different things in play, and, and I understand what, what Eileen is saying and her conversations with Carrie, and I, and I get it, I just, I'm just wondering if there's a second bite of the apple that we can take on this.
Right, Paul?
One of the other issues we would have is that because it's passive recreation, we have RSA protection through the state because it's open to everybody. We could lose that passive recreation RSA liability or, or umbrella if we make it Meramec-only residence. And that could be a potential, we'd have to look into that with our insurance company as well. But that's one, one avenue that when we were looking at things with another piece of property, that's one of the things they said.
Yeah, I was.
It means, if somebody gets hurt doing passive activities on a recreation piece in town, we're protected, and we have limitations if somebody gets hurt, like if they're walking and breaks a leg, they can, they can't sue the town and the town be liable for damages on that. However, if it's for Meramec residents only, somebody's walking on a trail, breaks a leg, they can sue the town and we would be liable to pay some of those damages potentially.
Nancy?
I think your point is well-taken, Bill, but I'd like to be able to separate it.
Okay.
That it certainly could be considered in the future and should be looked at, and maybe we can ask the Attorney General for their opinion, but it shouldn't slow us down from doing what, whatever we have to do.
I agree with you.
My concern is what, this could go on, we're not gonna hear from the Attorney General for three months.
No, you're right.
So, I'd like to concur with you, let's ask for an opinion, there's nothing to lose, but not to, and we can act once we get the response. But to put it, put that on the side burner, aside from this.
Your point's well-taken, Counsel, thank you.
Peter?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I, I'd like to make a motion at this time on this issue.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to move this proposed ordinance forward to the final reading, but I would like to add in the following wording regarding the residence-only parking areas. And that wording would read as follows. Residents of streets that are restricted to residence-only parking may have non-resident guests parking on the street by giving the Meramec Police Department 24 hours' notice and the resident placing a placard on the dashboard of each of their guest's vehicles, and that information with the placard to include the date, the name of the residence and the address. And this would be valid for a period of 24 hours.
I'll second that for discussion.
Okay, motion on the table, made by Peter, seconded by Nancy. You have that written down, Peter, so that.
I do have it written if we need to.
I will need it, but, just 'cause I'm not gonna be able to repeat that, but.
Can I speak to that motion?
Yes, please.
I've heard what a lot of the folks have said here, and again, this is not the final hearing, but what I would like to hear is the feedback on that caveat. Because again, my concern is, and you've heard, and to all those folks that have written in as well, is that i- if we don't do anything, then it, it's gonna be a problem. And to me, maybe this caveat of being able to have guests with 24 hours and you don't have to order a placard, you make it up so that if the police arrive down there from a complaint from one of your other neighbors, they look, they see something on the vehicle saying that, oh geez, these are guests of Mr. Jones at, at 9 Courier Road. Then they sort of know, okay, this is all good. As opposed to, you know, just a blank out, non-residents, and, and so, I would love to hear feedback if, if any of you folks were here tonight or were watching or listening regarding that caveat I've requested put on the motion. And again, it's not final tonight, the next hearing would be the final decision for this council, thanks.
I'm just gonna ask a couple of procedural things before we go any further. Eileen, do you suspect that that might be considered too substantial a change to be able to go forward from this point?
No, it was the money issue, the, the fact that there was a fine with money on it, so no, I would say no.
Okay. And Denise, can I put you on the spot and ask for your response to, to that?
I love being put on the spot. I've been quietly waiting, I. Although I completely appreciate what Counsel Albert is suggesting, because I do think it's, it's a really hard thing for the residents, you know, to, to not be able to have guests, and I completely understand. I just, I think we're getting it to a point where it's, I'm trying to make it, our job a little easier, and this is gonna make it more difficult. I don't know what the right answer is, I don't have the right answer for you. But this will, in fact, we're, now, we're gonna be asking our Communications Division to add another job, in essence, to, to do, I don't know how you would figure out the placards or where you would put them, but now we're, we're adding another job for them. And, you know, now we have to police the placards and, you know, to go down there and, and if, what if they have, somebody doesn't have a placard, how many placards are we gonna issue? I just, we're, it's gonna make it more difficult. We'll do whatever you want, but my personal opinion for our officers and for our Communications Division is that it will make it more difficult.
Okay, and I, and you wanna give me a chance first, or?
Oh, no, go ahead, Rick, sorry.
I, I understand that, I appreciate it, anything we do is gonna make it more difficult. What I think I hear Counsel Albert saying is that he wants to be able to report to the police department so that there's a record that you've requested it at least 24 hours in advance, and then put the information on the placard, not necessarily officially or with permit numbers or any of that kind of stuff that the police would have to track, but just so that when an officer did happen to go by, see a car there without a, a Meramec resident sticker on it, but see a specific sign that states a residence, a date and a, and a time period or something like that, that, that might give them a pass to, to walk to the next one, you know, just like the Meramec resident sticker would. But not, not to be permanent, not to be infinite, and, and things like that. And so, he's trying, I think, to reduce the load on the police department, but it, it will make it different. The officers that go by will have to be aware and know that something like that is an acceptable thing. Or do you think it would have to be an official laminated seal of Meramec-type thing to, to make it work?
Well, a- as you can imagine, and, and again, I, I'm not trying to make this more difficult. As you can imagine, everybody under the sun makes counterfeit whatever you have. So, you know, it, it, it should have an official steel on, a seal on it, excuse me, if, if that's what you want. I just, you know, it, it, then it turns into the, the neighbors, and again, I appreciate that the neighbors call, but the neighbors will call for every single vehicle that's parked down in the road, and, and now it's gonna have to be, the officers are gonna have to get out and look for the placards. Where are we gonna hang the placards in the movie mirror? I mean, I, I, there's so many things, I guess I really would have to, to sit down and, and think about, you know, how it would best work. Again, we'll do whatever you want us to do, that, our job is to enforce the, the ordinances you make. I appreciate you allowing me to give my opinion. I, I just think that it, it could, it could create more of a problem, it may not, I don't know, I guess I don't know. I'm not helping you at all, I know, I guess.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Anybody else have any, Peter, you wanted to come in?
I just, I was, my motion is suggesting that the placards would be made up by the resident.
How many?
Well, let me guess, it's kinda like, you know, at times, I, I've had the courtesy of one of my, one of my kids have graduated high school or college, and I know there's gonna be a significant number of people. I tell my neighbors so they know and so it's not a problem, and, you know, let them know, and. But to me, this is sort of under the spirit of that, but we're letting the town know. And I, you know, and you're gonna put out, I guess, 10 placards, or you don't, you don't put a number on it, it's what you, you know? I guess, if you're gonna have a graduation, I mean, I imagine Courier Road and that whole neighborhood, people have had graduations at very large parties, and most of them probably let their neighbors know so they're not alarmed. So, this would be sort of the spirit of doing it, that's where I'm coming from with that.
Okay, Barbara?
Yeah, my only consideration with that is that we have seen people in the last month or so exhibiting a high degree of creativity, to the point where they're dragging a couple of hundred pounds of picnic tables down a steep hill so that they can have their picnic by the stream. I do not underestimate the ability of anybody driving to the falls, noticing on a couple of visits that people, some people have little signs in their windows, and they're just handwritten. And what's to stop anybody from just handwriting it and saying, oh, I'm gonna be at 2 Courier Drive, 3 Courier Drive? Because the name and the number is on the mailbox. So, I think I would rather have something that's a little bit more official-looking that someone has on their dashboard. that someone has on their dashboard in the right-hand, left-hand corner so that, you know, patrol people can see it as they go by.
Any other comments, Eileen?
I just, I just would like to know, I'd like you to take into consideration that you are now asking the police department to spend additional time in one particular neighborhood, stopping, looking, is the date on there? Is it official, is it this, they have to go? There's a lot of crime in this town, there's a lot of things going on. And for the police to groom a particular neighborhood is unfair to the rest of the community. I mean, the really, the only solution is to find another additional, there's 80 acres there. And the only real permanent solution is to find another place where people can also access. I know it doesn't help for now, but it's just, we only have so many people. All of these, the communities that they're talking about, they have lakes, they have parking passes where they generate revenue so they can hire more police officers and have a whole division dealing with parking. So I just... My, you know, my solution is, I, you know, apparently the residents don't want, many of them don't want residence-only parking. If they, you know, parking on one side of the street, if they wanted to do that, you know, that may help because people won't be parked on both sides of the street. But it's, the idea of having the police department going around and trying to spend more of their time in one neighborhood than they are at the mall, for instance, is just, to me, unreasonable. So anyway, that's just my thoughts.
And I would say that I don't, thanks Lon, I don't expect them to be spending, you know, once an hour traversing the neighborhood looking for illegal parkers. I would expect that if there's a situation that arises that creates an issue and people are parked illegally, they would be ticketed. So people can get away with parking for a half an hour, an hour, or four hours if it's not causing anybody any harm or any grief. Even though there's the potential that somebody could, some policeman could go down there and find them there and ticket them, or somebody could call in and say, here's a problem, and the police could go down there and find them and ticket them. But I don't expect that we're asking the police to go make sure there's never anybody parked on the street that's not a resident. We're just enforcing the opportunity that if somebody is parked illegally, they can be ticketed. Right now, they can't be apparently because it's not enforceable.
Just know there's going to be unsightly signs all over the place too. And I know you probably consider that I'm just being obstinate, but there's, because I'm not trying to. You know I've spent hours on this, trying to find a solution. So I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm not, I'm also not, you know, unmindful of the issues that are happening down at that neighborhood. So, but I just wanted to say to you something from the perspective of the employees. I mean, as it is now, we have actually had to hire people to be standing there all day long. And we have to hire somebody to be standing at Watson Park all day long. And now we have to hire somebody at Watsonman Park, at least one, to make sure that the residence-only beach is not inundated by out-of-town residents. So it's, it's a big, large problem. And I think the simplest way would be to have no parking on one side of the street. That's just me.
I agree, it's...
All right, so we have a motion to move this one to the public hearing with the addition of the residents of restricted streets may have guest passes if they call the MPD. I'm going to paraphrase, at least 24 hours in advance giving notice and place a placard on the dash with info on the residence and date and time. That motion is on the table, do you want to, should we call the motion? Lon, I'm sorry, you had something you wanted to say and I cut you off, I apologize.
On my own advice, I'm not going to say what I wanted to say.
On my advice, would you say it? I'm just, I was just trying to add some levity, didn't work.
I'll call the question.
So on the motion to move this forward with the additional guest parking pass on it, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Opposed?
May.
May? And abstaining? Sorry. That goes down six, 1-6-0 with Peter voting in positive. I think, my personal reason for not being able to support that was the fact that we don't really have a solid solution there. I would rather move this forward and then create a solution that we could all get on board with, maybe as a side article or another, yet another amendment, if we needed, if we felt like we needed to do that. I'm inclined to move it forward just to get some more feedback from people as to whether they want to do Merrimack-only resident parking, understanding that we're trying to resolve the issues and concerns. But if the council's not interested in doing that, then we can drop that right here.
Well, I was going to make a motion to amend it, if I could, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
That the resident-only parking areas is effective from May 15th through September 15th.
Okay, you want to talk to that some more? Or we kind of beat that up already?
I think, I think we've kind of touched upon this particular point, Counsel Haley's alluded to it, our neighbors have alluded to it, and I think that the crux of people using Wildcat Falls is the summer months is to jump into the South Heagan. I mean, that's the bottom line. And if we, you know, without channeling our, you know, our inner Mike hat at it, I think we all could reasonably, you know, like that inner Mike hat, I think.
Got that.
That, you know, from May 15th, he's a MUR meteorologist, that from May 15th through September 15th, you know, it's generally 80 degrees or more and people are more inclined to look for a place to cool off. So that's how I arrived to May 15th, it's before Memorial Day and a week after Labor Day. So that way we're not pulling out a calendar looking to figure out, to me, that just, those numbers, those dates worked for me in my head.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Eileen?
I just wanted to ask if the amendment was to Peter's amendment? Oh, it's just the amendment to the original?
That was to bring the motion forward with the amendment of changing, putting specific dates on it.
Okay, thank you.
Finley?
Tom, I need clarity then, you said to bring the motion with amendments. Are we moving it to the third reading or is this just on his?
This would move it to the third meeting.
Okay.
We're at a public hearing, if we move it to the third hearing, which is what Bill's motion was to do, with the change...
Oh, no, that's good, I just thought it was just the amendment, I didn't, you know, I didn't...
I'll let Bill tell us what he was thinking.
I wanted to do the amendment and get approval or disapproval on that amendment. Because I think if you don't have this amendment and that we're validating the ordinance as is, then I think it provides a different direction that the council may take. If there is a majority that likes to have the conversation further with the seasonal approach to it, then approve the amendment and then come back and vote on the moving to a third reading.
Okay.
The third reading is an appropriate approach.
I misinterpreted then, I apologize.
It's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for asking for clarification.
Thank you, Tom.
So, the, the, the motion on the table is to amend 183-24. Just, I haven't called the question yet, give me a second, I want to just clarify what we're doing. So the motion on the table is to amend 183-24, Section 8, to include a statement saying that the parking restriction would only be between May 15th and September 15th inclusive. Barbara?
And that still moves with it, the part about one-sided parking?
No. This is only 24 we're talking about, 36 is one-sided parking.
Okay, good, thank you for valid clarifying that.
Any other questions, comments, statements? So we'll vote on the motion, on the amendment to 183-24. We've already, I think all of us nodded and agreed to put in a comment about the, any other official Merrimack resident sticker, which is what we had talked about last time. So to that now, we would also include the restrictive dates of May 15th through September 15th inclusive. Is that clear? So that's modifying the way it's presented here. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed or abstaining? So that passes 7-0-0. So we still have the motion, or we still have the ordinance on the table? Nancy did. Sure. Appreciate that. Yeah, I think that works, is your mic on?
No.
Sorry.
No, it wasn't, I'm sorry.
Can you say it again?
So the following areas are designated as resident-only parking areas from May 15th to September 15th inclusive, with parking restricted to Merrimack residents, said residents, to identify da-da-da-da to the end.
That's right?
That's correct.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay, so do we want to move this to a third reading as currently stands? Motion's made by Nancy and seconded by Barbara to move this ordinance change 183-24 to a third reading with the changes that have been made tonight and the discussion that's going on with public hearing and so forth. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Any abstaining? So that passes 6-1-0 with Finley Rothaus in opposition. I would point out that moving it to a third hearing is not a done deal. If people are adamant and if they have suggestions, then they should let members of the council know because we will be taking a vote on it at probably our next meeting as to move it into the books or to just drop it or delay it or whatever might come up at that point. The other public hearing, we're still in the public hearing. The other public hearing for tonight was on 183-36. I wanted to separate them just so we didn't, you know, constantly step on each other about it. These, as I've said before, can be taken together, they can be taken separately or they can not, none of them be taken forward. But this one was to limit parking in the Courier Road area to one side of the street. And those, that side of the street has been identified in the chapter, in Schedule 9 of 183-36 on each and every individual of those seven roads. And I read it last night, so, or last time, Burt Street is on the north side, Courier Road is on the east side, Fur Street is on the south side, Hemlock is on the north or west side, Pine Haven Drive would be on the east side, these are no parking areas at all. So Heagan Drive would be the north and west, and Tiffany Lane would be the east side. So if there's anybody that has comments on that, Finley?
Actually, everything seems to work fine, the only one that is a little bit of a question is South Heagan because there's another section of that that you wouldn't want the north side, it would be the south side, so...
And we talked about that briefly at the last meeting?
Right, and everything else seems to fit.
It does.
But, so I don't know if...
This is where Paul is going to tell us what their recommended solution to that is.
Okay, because I was saying, I was thinking if you put... All right, I'm good.
This is Courier Drive, coming down Courier Drive. This is the first, the right, you take a left onto South Heagan. The red is the no parking sign, so there'll be on the interior right side of the road around as you come, if you came into South Heagan Drive and came around, I have another... What's going on there? Page down, okay. So...
So that little, that little clip, rather than flipping back to the north side on that section, it would just stay along that side of the road?
And it goes all the way around that way, so it stays on the north side of the road, but in that area it would just stay on the left if you...
The west and south as you come around, the top there, yep.
Or the right if you turn it off of Courier.
Which is the only thing that makes sense, but technically it...
But that's where we wanted to show you, that's where there would be, it would be three, it would be on the odd side of the road here, 357 would be the no parking signs.
Before he moves on, would it be adequate getting rid of the north side on that where it's a South Heagan, you just leave it west side the entire length?
Or the odd side?
Oh, okay.
Is it the odd numbered side all the way around?
I'm trying to...
I suspect it is, but...
The Village District knows.
Yes, it's odd, it's the odd, it's the odd side right here, 25, 27, so it would be the odd side all the way around. Oh. That would just be on, South Heagan would be on the odd side of the road.
It happens to be the even side on all the others.
Yeah.
So maybe, maybe it should be modified from north and west to be the odd numbered side of the street?
If you want to. Does that work? Yeah, that works, yeah, if that's what you want, that works. Works for me. Because as you come, yes, as you come down, it's on the odd side. Right here, that's what I just got to, right here, this is, this is the, that's Pinehurst right there. And that's what he was talking about. Right here, so it's a cul-de-sac, one, two, three houses on it.
And this entrance we don't all know about is through that swamp?
Technically, it's like someplace in this cul-de-sac area. That's it, so on that side...
Just noticing the wetness, but that's why.
On that side it would be on the opposite side of the road, but this is Pinehurst right here.
Right.
Okay. Barbara?
So just to clarify, we're changing it from going directionally north or whatever to consistently the odd side of the street?
Of South Heagan Drive.
Oh, can we do it throughout the whole neighborhoods? Would that be easier to remember?
Well, because it was the even side on most of the other streets, I don't...
Whatever.
No. Peter?
What I see this doing is, it is going to guarantee us that we can get, one of our concerns in this issue was emergency vehicles. It's going to assure us, hopefully, that we'll get our emergency vehicles through, which I like. But what I see is, and it kind of goes with, if we shut some streets down with residence parking, then they'll move to other streets. Well now, if, the amount of vehicles you saw parking on both sides of the street, on Courier and Hemlock and Fur, now you've just taken them and you've cut them in half and does that mean they line up farther up Courier Road and farther down South Heagan Drive and so forth? So I guess one could look at it that way too. So I do like that this is allowing for emergency vehicles, which are a huge priority and was a concern. But then, you know, are we going to, and if this moves on, and I'm hoping this one does too... Um, but then, you know, are we gonna, and I, and if this moves on, and I'm hoping this one does too, because now the residents who live in this area know that they may have no parking on their side, but how about the folks that now are gonna have the parking on their si- their side? How do they feel? So I'd like to hear that too, if this moves on. And that's a rhetorical question for a future.
This, this ordinance is duplicating the effort we had of putting temporary no parking signs out there. Only this would make the signs enforceable, so that if people did park on the side of the road, they would definitely get a ticket if a cop were to go through there, police officer were to go through there and, and find them parked in a no parking area. Um, they would, they would be able to issue a ticket and it would be enforceable and it would be under the numbers that we're gonna talk about later on. Not ten dollars, kinda things, I think. And so people need to be cautious. So. Any other comments or questions? Eileen?
I'm sorry, Paul, I missed your part of your prev- I missed part of your preview there. Uh, so did you show them what the signs would look like on the streets?
No, actually, I was getting, I was getting to that next.
Cause I think that's important, that people need to know that there, if you have no parking on, if you have resident, no uh, parking for residents only, there's gonna have to be a bunch of signs that say that in order for them to be enforceable um, through the court. Uh, cause you have to properly display it. And then if you wanna have the other ones where um, there's only parking on one side of the street, you're gonna have to have a whole bunch of those too. So uh, just, again, it's just something you need to keep in mind.
So we um, we did the same thing looking at Booze, Boozeck going into Courier. Um, Deputy Director Fox laid this out. Um, with the no parking sign, as you'll see, is on the left-hand side, and then the Merrimack resident sign is the green sign, which is on the right-hand side. As we move further in, we got a little different view. This is going towards Sohegan, and you'll see that there's a no parking sign on the opposite side of Sohegan Drive, where there's a resident parking on this portion of it, going down and then between the signs. The one thing I do wanna mention to the council and to this neighborhood is that Deputy Fox estimates seventy-two signs. Both no parking and Merrimack resident only parking signs would be in that neighborhood. And he's spacing them out around two hundred and fifty to three hundred feet apart in the areas where he can. Um, some are a little longer, some are a little shorter. He's trying to take them away from people's driveways and eyesight, so not right out their front door, so that's why it might be a little longer than two hundred and fifty feet. So, but he has uh, done a quick sketch and that was the other sketch we saw, and there was seventy-two signs on that on the other sketch.
And regardless of whether we do one or the other or both, you're still gonna need seventy-two signs, right? Well, no parking on one side might not need as many, but if you did residents only, and that's all you did, you would still need seventy-two signs, cause you gotta put them on both sides of the road. Right?
Yes, if there's an, if you're not doing no parking anywhere then.
If we're not doing no parking, we'd still have to put residents only signs out.
Correct.
So it's not like we're gonna save on signs, except if we only do the one-side parking.
Correct.
One-side no parking. That one, you'd have a lesser number of signs.
Lesser number, it won't be thirty-six, it'll be a little bit less because you, you still need the no parking signs. The Merrimack resident signs can go a little bit further because there's arrows directing people.
Peter?
Again, I think that to be consistent, should we uh, put a timeframe on this, much like the last ordinance? May, uh, what is it, May fifteenth to September fifteenth? I'm asking the council how they feel about that.
Yeah?
That uh, negates one of the major arguments, access for emergency vehicles. If you, if you're saying from after September fifteenth you can park on both sides, that doesn't take in, consider a major argument, which is access for emergency vehicles.
Yeah, I get it, and you make a great point, but we've also heard that traffic and parking is not an issue outside of those dates.
In term, in terms of the amount of parking, but it's still, you still have the issue, which was one of the arguments that really had me change my mind about one-side parking. It really had to do with the safety. And that's gonna be true even after, that's all.
Okay. But didn't, didn't, didn't we receive testimony from the police and fire chief that, or their deputies, I don't remember who they were specifically, that in fact, the real problem for safety equipment was down at Hemlock at the very end?
Was around the corners.
Right, and that was it, in particular, but.
But it was real tight, if you, if you look at, you add some snow onto the stuff during the winter, that, you know, they're very narrow, you add a car on there, you're talking tight, really tight. And add the winter, any snow to that, it's even more tight. So I'm not, I, I know what you're saying, cause you're right, there was testimony that had to do, but then the follow-up discussion had to do with, generally speaking, maybe we can ask.
We can ask the chief? Fire chief or the, or the?
The fire chief.
Police chief?
Cause it's really against the law.
Thought you'd get away with it. Eileen?
I'm sorry, but I, I just wanna make sure that you know that if he says that it isn't a problem, that we can never declare emergency down there, because he's determ- no, but I'm just telling you that if we wanna put in an emergency ordinance with the chief, both chiefs, myself and the um, Dep- the DPW director saying that we're closing all the side of the street as an emergency because there is no access because of fire vehicles, if he says that that's not tru- true right now, then we, that takes that away.
Takes care of it for now.
Okay.
I mean, and I, I can't deny the truth, if that's what, if that's his truth, then that's his truth.
I don't, I don't think I'm following Eileen's commentary there, I don't know that I understood what you said.
So what I'm saying is, when we originally put up the signs, temporary signs on one side of the street, no parking on one side of the street, it requires it to be an emergency. An emergency is actually a real emergency, not an inconvenience or not because people are gross or not because, you know, um, people are disrespectful. It has to be an emergency, so if I want to put up an emergency ordinance that's signed off by all of us to limit parking to one side of those streets only, if he answers, and I'm not saying that you shouldn't have an answer, but if, if he answers that that's not the case, then I can't do an ordinance that says, I mean, I can't do an emergency order that says that in the future.
Because you've taken away the rationale.
Sure, no, I get it.
But tha- but that's true in the future as well. If, if you can't get him to say it's an emergency, then you can't put up an emergency ordinance, whether he says it today or now or later.
He already said it, but um, let's hear what he-
What?
The only caveat, the only caveat is, I want you to think of those times in the winter.
But we shouldn't have them if it's not an emergency, you're right.
This is great. It's difficult to concretely say one hundred percent if car, you know, and without dodging the question, I apologize. It's difficult to say that if cars are parked on both sides of the street, we can't get through. And it's difficult to say that if cars are parked on both sides of the street, we can. There are entirely too many variables to predict, including as Counselor Harrington pointed out, snowbanks, where and how specifically people park, you know, do they park half on the grass, do they put their whole car on the road? Do they leave three feet so that they can open the door and not step on the grass? What I can say with certainty is that if cars are parked on both sides of the road, the likelihood of being able to safely get from one end of the road to the other with, with our fire apparatus, the likelihood goes way, way down. Can I say that it absolutely couldn't happen? No, there's just too many variables, but poor parking, snowbanks, any other obstructions, turns in the road, as, as was alluded to, um, are, are certainly a significant issue. We can fit the truck in a straight line in less room than we can fit it around a turn, obviously. I would be concerned with parking being allowed on both sides of the street and the likelihood that it was going to happen, as has been seen in the past, um, that we wouldn't be able to get through without either damaging something or just plain not fitting.
Okay, thank you.
Good save.
That answer your question?
I'm fine, it was Peter's question, it was Finley's question.
Alright.
I liked his chief's comment the last meeting when he said he probably can get through.
He's got a lot more weight on his truck than they have in their cars, is that what? Um, technically, this is a public hearing, so if there's anybody in the audience that would like to, to speak to this particular um, ordinance change, please come do so at this point.
You opened it at nine twenty?
Opened it at nine twenty, yeah.
Leah St. Laurent, thirty-two Courier Road. Um, again, I've been living in that neighborhood for twenty-six years, Nancy, and never, ever has our neighborhood ever had a problem with parking. Um, we're all respective of our neighbors next door, and if somebody has na- has, has people over and they're parked here, then we park over here. We've never, ever had an issue, and I think, I don't know if you can attest to any problems of not being able to get down our street before with parking on both sides. But what my question is, is, had, did you, did the police department and fire department see the amount of parking when it was totally congested and, and all cars were parked on, around the whole neighborhood, okay? My question is, would you be able to get your fire truck down, not only down Courier, but around the corner and back out of the neighborhood?
With it completely congested?
Because I don't know how, if it's parking on one side, oops, sorry, you know where I'm going.
That's why it went to one side.
Even if it is one side though, with it being one side, people were parked all the way around every corner, and I don't think a fire truck could be able, and that was my concern, because the kids down by the files, we've had emergencies down there, and it was, you know, it, I was like, hopefully nobody gets hurt, because there's no way that, you know, emergency personnel are gonna be able to get down there. And even if they got down there, they wouldn't be able to back up and turn back onto Fur Street to even turn around to get out. They'd have to back all the way back up.
Weren't they supposed to be no parking a certain ti- ti- distance away?
You have to be a certain distance from the intersection and things like that.
Which I think, which I think addressed your issue. There was, your cons- I'm sorry, I shouldn't have touched it.
Did you have anything you could add, chief? Before you sit down completely?
I, I didn't have occasion to see it firsthand. Again, as I said, um, the curves, the curves and the turns are always, are always problem areas. Without seeing it, I can't say whether we would've been able to easily get in there or not. Uh, I do know that uh, the police stepped up patrols over the summer and did make every effort to try to prevent parking on both sides when they saw it, to the extent that they could. But I, I, I can't say a hundred percent whether we would have made it or not.
Do you, well, I understand that, but given this particular ordinance of parking on only the east side of Courier Road, or not parking on the east side of Courier Road, only being able to park on the west side, which would bring them on the outside of the curve going down on Hemlock and stuff like that, do you think that that would be a hindrance or a help to be able?
So I might be able to add a little, shed a little light on it.
Thank you.
So I did, cause I'm nosy and I did go down several times, uh, during the height of the cars parking on either side of the road. Uh, so I, I do, I do believe the straightaways, they can, uh, fire truck can get through. Our concern was, and, and I showed Eileen this, uh, when you get to the end of Courier Road, the entrance to Wildcat Falls is to the right. Well, that left-hand turn right there, if somebody parks on the left-hand side, so, I guess I, I would call it the north side, I don't know what you would call it, but on that side, that's where a problem would be. Yes, they cannot be thirty feet from that stop sign. Um, and it, the road it there on Hemlock is actually designed on the right side, if you turn left onto it, on the right side, there's enough room for cars to park along that wooded area. So those are fine, it's that tight left-hand turn. Uh, we do have the luxury of having another entrance into that way, so it's, um, you know, but again, that could be tight too if somebody on the, on the opposite side. I just want everyone to know too, we have not responded for that issue. Um, we have not gone down there because people have parked on both sides of the road up close to the intersection to the stop sign. We're just worried that if someone did, it could happen. Um, so I just, I didn't know if you knew that or not, so it has not been.
Eileen?
Aren't there laws about how far you can park from a stop sign?
Thirty feet.
Okay, well you can give people tickets now when we establish this new thing. Now, if you wanna put in more stop signs, for instance, then there ends up being less parking because of the law of the thirty feet.
Correct, and, and that law is already in place. We can do it now, um, it's just we haven't had an occasion to do it, because it hasn't happened, so.
So it's thirty feet of an intersection or a feet of a stop sign?
Thirty feet of a, a traffic control device, so thirty feet of a stop sign.
But there's no stop sign.
Either direction?
Uh, on either direction, but it's, it's normally, as you're approaching it,
Right.
Thirty feet from there, that's what the law was designed for, so if you're coming up to a stop sign on the right-hand side, you cannot be thirty feet from that stop sign.
But if you go past that stop sign, you can park immediately on the other s- on the other side of the road you crossed?
No, either way, thirty feet.
Thirty feet from the intersection, not from the stop sign? The road's twenty-five feet, the stop sign's four or five feet from the road.
I guess I'm confused at what you're asking me, so I approach the stop sign?
So I approach the stop sign and I go past that stop sign.
So you drive through it?
How soon after that can I start, can I park?
Well.
Thirty feet?
Thirty, thirty feet, but-
Which is basically the other side of the road.
Correct.
So all the way up to the intersection, I, I can park as close to the intersection as I want, as long as the stop sign's on the other side of the road.
Right, well you can't, alright, now I understand what you're saying.
I thought there was a restriction.
No, you can't, you can't, there's stop sign and yes, you can't block an intersection, so you can't be in the middle of the intersection?
No, I understand that, but, but can I be just off the intersection, or do I have to leave enough visibility for people?
You have to leave enough visibility for people.
So there's no, there's no, there's no verbiage on how far you have to be from an intersection?
You just can't block the intersection. I'd have to double-check to see if it's thirty feet from the intersection, I actually have it, I'll, I, I brought it with me, in case there was a question.
That's, that gets us out of it. Thanks, I appreciate it, I didn't mean to grill you on it, I just, just trying to understand. Where are we?
Merrimack Town Hall.
Are you sure?
And you wanna tell me what time it is?
Absolutely, it's now eight thirty.
Now. It's now. So I see people.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I couldn't listen. And I get accused, I get accused of not having levity at times, so. You should cherish this moment.
I, I do. Is there any other people wanting to speak from the public? Wait till you get up here, please.
I'll just add one thing to that, home row and twenty-nine Courier. I agree with what uh, Chief Roy just had to say with the fact that we haven't, there's only been one time, maybe two times where we've actually had people on both sides of the street in that one corner of there. There have been many times where they have jammed up the entrance on both sides, and there's no way anybody's really getting down there. I mean, the people trying to park can't even get down there. But I think the um, again, I just thought I might mention, the biggest challenge and one of the biggest reasons this has been come up is because the volume of traffic of people coming down to that area. Um, and it was when the temporary signs went up, I know that Eileen and Police Department did what they could at the time to try to help us curb that, and it, it did not change the dynamic of how many people were coming down there. Um, so in my personal opinion, I, I don't know that no parking on one side, if we weren't to do anything at all, I would probably definitely do that around that corner where that loop is by all means, because that's definitely a safety issue, a major safety issue sometimes. But doing the neighborhood that way, it, you might as well just not do it, in my opinion, because it won't, it won't really mean to do too much, so. Thank you, that's it.
So I, I'm at a total loss, I really don't know how to move forward and solve this problem. We, we can move this forward, uh, if anybody wants to do that, um, but it, it doesn't sound like it necessarily solves any problems. So, um, if there's nobody else, and thank you, Barbara, if there's nobody else wanting to speak to the town council, I didn't see any of the letters that spoke directly to that, and we've read all the letters, so you got those ideas already. So we'll close the public hearing at nine thirty. Uh, Peter?
I make a motion to uh, move this uh, ordinance as written to the next uh, session.
To the next reading, third reading? With the change of the odd side of Sohegan Drive. Odd-numbered- Odd-numbered side of, so he can drive. Right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And you agree to that. So motions made by Peter and seconded by Nancy, did you want to speak to that further?
Uh, no, I think that, again, I think there's valid points, and I think there's valid concerns. It gives us two more weeks to think this over, and like we said, in two weeks, we'll make a final decision.
Okay, thanks. Finley, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in the quandary as well, I don't know what this will serve, what purpose. For me, the no parking situation has become just a safety situation, and I really think that the Hemlock end of it all is what is really necessary of no parking, down right at the entrance of the park. So beyond that, I'm supporting moving it forward to a third reading, but I'm just not sure. I'll have two weeks to get my head together, I suppose.
And read your email.
Yeah. Well, and I, and I'm hoping to get something from that.
I, me too.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call the motion, call the question on the motion to move this to the third hearing, with the, the change of the description of so he can drive being odd-numbered side of the street. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed or abstaining? That passes seven-zero-zero.
You know, one could argue on both sides, it would just come out even, on both sides of each one of these.
And I always count on a public hearing to get my head together, and I, it didn't help.
It's only more so now.
It didn't help tonight.
Didn't help tonight.
No, I know I'm confused.
Well, that's, part of that's the problem with COVID-19 and, and people not wanting to come out and.
Yeah.
Restricted seating and every other darn thing, so. Wow, all the way through the public hearing, so, um, we'll move on to Town Manager's report. Barbara? Excuse me, Eileen?
Sorry, do we need a motion, or can the council just charge the town manager to look at possibilities of a new entrance?
That would be a goals thing, maybe. That, or true.
I think we've been looking at that and would continue to look at that.
Yeah, I will, you know, I'll put it on my list for sure.
Just, in case, I mean, because we, as we've been talking here, we've said that's the ultimate solution.
It is.
Is if we can find another area where we can build a parking lot out of a residential area, to be able to admit, I, I, looking at the map, because I also looked at it, not seeing it.
See, I think the Conservation Commission would, yeah.
Would make, they know it the best.
They would have done it already.
They would have done it by now, but still.
And if they had a million and a half dollars, they'd build a footbridge and.
We don't know that they would have thought of it, I mean, but I don't think it hurts to ask.
No, I absolutely agree, well.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Town Manager's report.
I think I've said enough. I don't have anything.
Any questions for the town manager on her report? Seeing none. Old Business. Oh, God. The review of updated COVID-19 guidance for amateur and youth sports submitted by Parks and Rec Director Matthew Gasparius. Thank you, Matt. The town council to review the update of Governor Sununu's COVID-19 guidance document for town amateur and youth sports.
Okay, thank you, everybody. It was five weeks ago that we were here last talking about this, and it seems like a lifetime ago, doesn't it?
It does.
On, on July third, the governor released an update to his guidance for youth sports, and there were essentially two substantive changes to the guidance document. As you recall, in the original version, youth, youth and amateur sports were limited to kind of non-contact only, and his, his latest version issued July third now allows basically for full contact. They have to essentially social distance as much as possible, you know, and then wear cloth masks when not possible, but it's allowed. And that basically applies to all sports.
Matt, can I just ask you this? How in the world is that possible? No, you can play contact sports, but you have to keep six feet apart and wear masks.
I'm, yeah.
Well, only have to wear a mask if you can't keep six feet apart.
Right.
So if you're gonna go hit somebody, you gotta put a mask on.
Oh, okay.
Basically, I mean, this is.
Yeah, that sounds like, like that's really gonna happen.
All helmets are gonna have face shields now.
Yeah. I mean, in football, it's gonna be probably the biggest one.
Well, that's the way to get around, you know.
Now, is this for only practices still, or is this for games?
No, it's, they allow full games now.
During games, just New England, though.
Just, and then that's the second piece is, all of New England is allowed versus a month ago, it was just me and New Hampshire and Vermont. But they are substantive changes, you know, so obviously, this is why we're here, and the, the recommendations, obviously, just to update to where the governor said we, he's okay with us being.
And is that your guidance?
It is.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Comments, thoughts? We've made a couple of thoughts known just suddenly, but, about how do you stay six feet apart and have contact sports, but. Peter? Uh, we will need a motion, I think.
So moved?
Seconded.
Get away with that?
Wow.
Well done.
I'm gonna say the motion is not to follow the governor's suggestion, no. Was that your intent, to follow the governor's suggestion, then, Peter?
Yes, thank you.
The motion is to follow the governor's modified guidance on youth and outdoor sports. Is that what it is? Amateur and youth sports. Somebody seconded that?
I did.
Okay, motion made by Peter, I was too busy trying to be funny. Seconded by Bill. And to update to the governor's latest guidance on amateur and youth sports, as presented by Matt Gasparius. Any further comments? Seeing none, we'll call for the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Or abstaining, I'm opposed, so, that'll, that'll pass six-one-zero with Tom Koenig in, in opposition.
I wish it didn't take so long, though.
Really, could you? That brings us to number two under Old Business, which is. St. Cobain, New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services air permit approval of consultants. Submitted by Assistant Public Works Director of Wastewater, Sarita Croce. Sarita, welcome. It's good to see you again, it's been a while. Hopefully, it's good to see you again, you got good things to say, I hope.
Now it's on.
Now it's on?
Now it's on.
Okay.
I just have to say to Chief Roy, thank you so much for telling me that I can't park thirty feet from a stop sign. I will never do that. I, I actually texted that to all my kids, too. Because none of us knew that.
You don't remember that from when you were sixteen and you were?
No, I do not remember that. I said.
I got my original license in Louisiana, I don't know if they had that rule or not. Gotta park your gators further away, I guess.
Well, I, I told all my kids, so now everybody knows that we have to park thirty feet from a stop sign.
Or, at least thirty feet from a stop sign.
At least thirty feet, at least thirty feet.
Okay.
Let me make this bigger, I think I know how to.
The town council is to consider the approval to pay certain consultants to assist the town with challenges to St. Cobain's NHDES air permit.
Okay, so, thank you very much Chairman Koenig and town council members for allowing me to review with you a little bit about the status of the air permit with St. Cobain, as well as talk about a need to have some expert consultants help us with the appeal process. So what I'd like to do today, because it's been a little while since we've actually talked about St. Cobain, I'd like to go over what happened in the air, with the air permit, very quickly, talk about the air permit appeal, which we submitted, or the town council submitted, talk about the process, the activities completed today, the reason why we need consultant support, and then the estimated costs, and of course, comments and, and discussions. So, I think we all remember back February eleventh, two thousand twenty, St. Cobain, New Hampshire DES issued a air, temporary air permit to St. Cobain after almost four years of evaluating groundwater contamination at their facility. In September, actually, September twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen, New Hampshire DES determined that the cause of the, the groundwater contamination at the facility was from the stacks and the emission of the chemicals from those stacks. The primary chemical of concern there, of course, is PFOA, or has been PFOA. And, New Hampshire DES, in the September twenty-sixth letter, actually said that their emissions have caused and continue to cause and contribute to groundwater contamination. So therefore, they were required to figure out what they were going to do to solve that problem. And in their permit application, they said they would install an RTO, which is a regenerative thermal oxidizer, which is basically a box that burns the stuff at very, very high temperatures, so that it breaks all these wonderful bonds. Following the, when they issued the permit, there was a, a process that we all went through. We actually submitted a public comment to the draft permit, we had some issues with it. New Hampshire DES looked at all of our comments, they responded to them, and then they issued that final permit. Well, following the issue of the fin, issuance of the final permit, the town of Merrimack, all of you, town council, elected to file an appeal with the Air Resources Council. And the reason we decided to file an appeal is we felt that the permit that was issued on February eleventh, two thousand twenty, was not protective to human health and the environment, and specifically, it wasn't protective because we were gonna have uncontrolled emissions of these PFAS compounds, like PFOA, which is perfluoro-octonic acid, just in case everybody has forgotten, Gen X, because Gen X replaced PFOA, and it replaced it in that process of making this Teflon, and then hydrogen fluoride, which is a byproduct of this oxidizer, or this incinerator that they're putting on the roof. One thing I just want to mention really quickly, just so that the public's aware, that St. Cobain also did submit a variance request. In response to our appeal and in response to the issues associated with COVID-19, St. Cobain requested a one-year extension from the deadline established by New Hampshire DES to actually have that thermal oxidizer installed on the roof and operating. So they were required to have it up on the roof by February eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, and they've requested at least a one-year extension for February eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. And one of the claims that they made in their variance was that because of the town's appeal, there would be a drastic redesign required. And we have written a letter, which I submitted to the town manager for review, where we refute those claims. So the appeal process, what hap, yes?
I just, I just want to point out that if the, if this extension of one year is granted by DES, it will have been six years of continuous contamination beyond when it was identified, to the point of where they actually take some action to eliminate the, the PFAS from the air emitted, emissions. Six years.
Yeah, that's a long time, long time. So the appeal process, what's involved in the appeal? The appeal had to be filed within thirty days of the date of the issuance of the permit. So we were required to file it by March eleventh, if I counted right. The town was required to demonstrate in that appeal that we had a direct interest. So just because you don't like something, doesn't mean you can appeal it. You have to have a direct interest in the appeal, and you have to have a reason why you wanted the permit to be sent back to New Hampshire DES to be reevaluated. The Air Resources Council, which is the body that reviews the appeal, has to vote to accept the appeal. Once the appeal is accepted, then you go through another process. All the parties involved in the appeal have to meet to try and figure out if they can solve the problem before they go and they present everything in, in front of the board.
Sarita?
Yes.
So did they accept our appeal?
Yes, they did, that's the next, that's the next slide.
What? Okay.
Sorry. If we can't settle the appeal, then we're required to agree on a schedule, and then ultimately, a hearing date is set. So now, this, this slide actually reviews where we are in the status. So the appeal was officially filed on March tenth, two thousand twenty, yes?
We're not talking about the extension now.
No.
Okay, I just want to.
Just the appeal.
I know you understand that, but I just want to make sure.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
So, the appeal was filed with New Hampshire DES on March tenth. We have an air consultant here who has been helping us with some of the technical aspects of the appeal, Paul Murphy with CAA Associates. And also, our legal counsel, Joanna with Drummond Woodson, has also been helping it, and she actually filed the appeal on our behalf. In this case, we filed the appeal because we felt as though it was not, the permit was not protective, and we would have uncontrolled emissions of the PFAS, the Gen X, and hydrogen fluoride. The Air Resources Council voted in April to accept the appeal. The hearing officer is Don, David Connolly, and the first scheduled hearing where they were going to actually assign all the dates was on June twenty-ninth. Now, before June twenty-ninth, we had to meet, and we had to try and see if we could resolve our issues. So we had a meeting with St. Cobain, the state, that included the Attorney General being present, and on June twenty-third, it was a conference call, and we were not able to resolve any of our concern. The hearing is actually on December thirteenth. Prior to the hearing date of December thirteenth, we actually have to identify expert witnesses, as well as provide exhibits for both the Air Resources Council, for New Hampshire DES, as well as St. Cobain. And then what happens is, once we submit all this information, St. Cobain will also submit the information, New Hampshire DES could possibly submit information, and we all get a chance to look at it, and we go, all get a chance to say, well, this doesn't make sense, and ask questions. The other thing we're allowed to do in this process is we're actually allowed to ask for additional information. So in this case, if we wanted to go back and do some calculations and say that perhaps, if you give us the following information, we can figure out how much potential to emit of hydrogen fluoride there is, we can ask for that at that time. So, let, I'd like to talk a little bit about the expert witness. An expert witness is someone who comes to any sort of legal proceeding, and what they are is they have extensive experience in the area, which we are discussing. So, for example, if we're talking about an RTO, an expert witness for an RTO is someone who designs it, someone who installs it. If we're talking about an expert witness for stack testing, we're talking about someone who has spent twenty years doing stack testing, reviews all the data. A lot of times, these people are analytical chemists, because they can review the data that came out of the instrument that analyzed it, and say whether that data makes sense or not. And in this case, we also want expert witnesses, and it's very important that they're objective. If a person has a conflict of interest, or they have any bias, they really cannot serve as an expert witness. An expert witness also provides discussion or will explain some of these very technical issues in, in a very impartial manner. So something to note about the council, the Air Resources Council, is they are not all experts in air, air resources, they're not all engineers, some people can be just residents who've been nominated to serve on that, some people are from universities, some people are, are a member of DES. So you have people from industry as well, so you have people from all walks of life who can join this council, and the, it's very important to be able to explain the things in a very simplistic manner, and also, explain it in a manner that not only they can understand it, but that you can show that the individual who's presenting the information actually does know what they're talking about. Does anybody like Smokey the Bear? Yeah. Wasn't it perfect? I thought it was perfect. In this case, what we have done is, this was actually a very, very difficult process to try and find someone who would actually be an expert witness in this, in this type of a situation. I spent, we spent probably about a month talking to various people that we wanted to, to work with us, and pretty much everybody has said no. So we finally have found a consulting company, which has a air resources expert who has twenty years of experience, who will review what we have as a four-thousand-page stack test report. Now, this stack test report, I mean, I could, of course, can read it, and I can look at it, and I can, and complete an evaluation, but the individual who'll be doing it has been doing this for twenty years, and what's really important about doing this is that that individual will not only look at that stack test report from the perspective of what has been done there, but she'll have twenty years of experience to go on, on what's been done on other projects. And are they following normal procedures when they do the evaluations? In addition, Paul Murphy has. Um, in addition, Paul Murphy has been helping us, he actually helped us write the, um, the, our comment letter for the variance request, and he'll also be helping us with, um, providing comments on the engineering side of the RTO, um, as well as the ambient air limits calculation for HF. Um, a spoiler alert for, for anybody who's listening, one of the things that we found out, or as we've been looking at this, is that, uh, Gen X hasn't really been accounted for. So Gen X is a nice molecule, and it has 11 fluoride molecules attached to it. Well, those are 11 molecules that can make HF, and that becomes really important. Now, if you go back, and if anybody remembers those dip pans that we were talking about, you'll remember that in the dip pans, we had 25 PPB, parts per billion, of PFOA. The highest concentration of Gen X, I believe, was about 1,500 PPB. So that's 1,500 parts per billion of Gen X, and we haven't accounted for it. That Gen X is going to go into that oxidizer and that incinerator, and it's also going to break apart. We may not be concerned about it from an aspect of groundwater contamination, but it's going to make that HF that should require DES to require a scrubber be placed on it. So that's just one of the, the comments that we have. Um, so it's 15,500 for the consultant on the stack testing, about $10,000 for us to do the work from the engineering aspect. Uh, we've estimated $4,500 for expert testimony. Um, this potentially can go on for a few days, so the costs may vary a little bit. And just to let you know, the $10,000 also includes, um, CAA Associates, Paul Murphy, helping us with the variance letter. I know this was really exciting.
Pretty, pretty exciting. Barbara, did you have a question you wanted to ask?
Yes, Sarita, so regarding the engineering evaluation, um, there had to have been an evaluation of that for the appeal anyways. So what's different in, I mean, in calculating the air limits? Just the addition of the Gen X breakdown?
So we really actually discovered the Gen X after we submitted the appeal.
Okay, so that's a new finding anyways.
So it was a new finding, as well as when you, when we're, what we're doing now is we're trying to get information from vendors who actually sell RTOs to tell us, um, what are the key components, what are the capabilities. One of the other things that the appeal had, uh, had actually, um, had an issue with, or we had an issue with, was that in the final permit, they removed the requirement to test the concentration of PFAS and Gen X and everything going into the oxidizer and coming out.
Coming out.
Well, the definition of backed, and I, and I actually would like to read it to you, says best available control technology means an emission limitation based on the maximum degree of reduction for each air contaminant. Well, the maximum degree of reduction is directly related to.
To how much is going in.
It's the efficiency, and how much is going in. So we need to do some more work on that, because we need to prove that it is extremely important to require San Cobain to test both in and out, to really comply with the essence of backed.
So why were the consultants or the expert witnesses rather hard to get?
Um, okay, um, well, uh, for the most part, they didn't want to get involved. So I first was reaching out to analytical chemists at laboratories, and they were concerned that by being involved in this, that would somehow impact their ability to get business from other customers. So they didn't want to lose that ability to get business from other customers. Uh, in some cases, they had a conflict of interest. So at some point in time, they had either dealt with, um, uh, individuals on the San Cobain side, or, you know, uh, cons, uh, their, their attorneys or, or things like that.
Or their consultants, or whatever.
Or, or other consultants, so there was a conflict of interest there. Um, and then, in other cases, people were just afraid. It, it's not an easy thing to do. It's, it's a scary thing to do. So it was, it's been tough. I think we've got it now, though.
I'm sorry. I'm the wrong person to ask.
Go ahead.
Anybody else have any questions? Peter?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Somebody have a question?
No, did you have a question? There are other people with questions, so.
I, I have more of a comment, I'll wait for the questions.
Bill?
Okay, thank you. Sarita, thank you very much for putting this together. Um, this is more of a, I'm just going to say, is this potentially like, like a landmark appeal, or a precedent-setting appeal by being a community that is attacking the issue as it relates to how a company is treating their PFAS or their emissions? Is this groundbreaking at some, some level?
So I do think it is groundbreaking in terms of backed.
Okay.
Um, and I'll tell, and in terms of backed, and in terms of the calculations, and I'll tell you why it's groundbreaking in terms of backed. The way we interpret the rule, and this is Joanna, myself, and Paul, is that they completely did not capture the essence of backed at all. So with this appeal, it will actually set precedence on how they have to apply backed. So the federal government, um, other states who have these rules, they all have, uh, adopted these types of regulations, and they all follow a set of rules that seem not to have been followed in this situation. In terms of the HF, I do also think that this is going to be a very important, um, ruling, because in, in other situations where you have a byproduct of a process, and you evaluate it, you do it based on something that's called potential to emit. And that whole concept has been thrown out here. So the fact that you had 190 compounds, and you only looked at 89 of them, and you said, oh, well, we couldn't figure out what was going on with the 101, so we just dropped that. The fact that you didn't even look at Gen X, that just co, completely goes against the gradient of what there's, of what they're supposed to do. They're supposed to look at potential to emit, and based on potential to emit, they're supposed to make those decisions. So now, who would have done those calculations? Well, that was going to be on San Cobain's side. So San Cobain should have submitted an application that had all of that information. I think what's important about this case is that we want the rules to be followed the way they're supposed to be followed, and we want to be protective to the public, and that's extremely important here. And in order to be protective to the public, y, you have to do, you have to go through the process of doing the right evaluations.
Follow up, Mr. Chairman? Sure. Um, as it relates to the pre-conference meeting that you had with DES and San Cobain, out of morbid curiosity, how long did that meeting last?
I think the meeting was about an hour and a half.
Hour and a half.
Maybe, maybe a little bit longer, I don't, it wasn't very long. I mean, there wasn't a lot of, there was a lot of, there was a lot of talking by lawyers. Um, there wasn't really any resolution discussion.
So you, basically, it was a security conversation?
I would say so.
Okay. Okay. Uh, general, just a general comment, I mean, we've been committed on this issue, Mr. Chairman and my colleagues, we've been very committed on, on this particular issue, and I think for us not to allocate the money would be disingenuous to our community that we're not following through and trying to back up what we, what we have chosen to stand by. So I think this is certainly an, an investment in trying to, to better our community, and I would encourage my colleagues to support the request for the allocation. And Sarita, thank you again so much for all of the work you and your team have done on this particular issue, not just with, but the ancillary stuff as it relates to, you know, our wastewater as well, so thank you so much, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Nancy?
Uh, just as an addition or an aside, this is, I had received this information, thank you very much, and Eileen as well, for the State Commission on PFOA that I'm liaison, so I did this presentation to them as well. So, yeah, I could, oh, I understood that. It took me a while. It took me a while. And what was interesting is, um, they had that Merrimack was going to submit some information, but they didn't know it was me. And I went, whoa, and I'm on Zoom, I'm going, wait a minute, I'm the, I'm the one.
Um, that's me.
That's me. And so I'm talking, and it was, I, and I talked about the appeal, I'm sorry, the, uh, extension that they wanted and all that stuff. And I was very factual until I got to the end, and I made a statement similar to what Eileen said, it says, and just to make everyone clear, this was, you know, discovered in 2016, it will have been six years, at which point the senator who was chairing said, well, that's, you know, that, that's sort of personal opinion. I said, yes, and Merrimack has a personal opinion that we're sick of it.
And it is factual.
And it is factual, yeah, so it's not just personal opinion.
You know, and I imagine that that was the word, but it basically said, yeah, and that's the way we feel about it. So, and DES was, the new person for DES was there too, so, anyway.
Are you, you done?
Yes, I am done, thank you.
Peter?
Um, you know, I don't want to spend this $30,000. I don't think taxpayers want us to, but we committed to go down the road, and we, I think it's the right road. Why, I just sit here, and it bothers me that our good friends, our community partner, San Cobain, is, is requiring us to do this. They could, they could address this problem, they could come to the table and, and deal with it, but they refuse to. Um, and I think that, I don't think any of us here, um, take spending $30,000 lightly, but we've committed to make this company address these issues. I mean, when I saw that report of what the address, the issues they were going to address and the, the chemicals that were still going to come out of their smokestack in our community, hydrogen fluoride for one, I'm thinking, that's not acceptable, but they think that is acceptable. They're not, they're, they're still not acting like community partners, and I hope at the end of this, maybe we'll get some of these funds back some way, somehow. So I certainly support this. Thank you.
Any other comments? So, I, you have a comment in here that costs may increase if additional technical evaluations are required. Do you, do you want to make a, just a wild guess as to what number might cover that? Or, I mean, a lot of times with, with major construction programs, they put a 10% cost overrun rider on it. If we did it, a 10% cost overrun rider, would that even begin to address potential issue here, or, yes?
If, if any of that started to come up, um, we would, um, we would come and talk to you again, but no, um, these people have given Sarita an estimate, and when she talks about, she kind of gave a ballpark estimate for the es, expert testimony, because we don't know how many days that's going to be. Um, and so we're talking a couple of thousand dollars, maybe five, right?
I think so. I, I think the overruns will be related to what San Cobain and New Hampshire DES gives us. I have no clue what they're going to give us, and we're going to have to evaluate that information. Um, and if something, or what they ask of us. So San Cobain and New Hampshire DES is, they're allowed to ask us to give, to give them specific information. So if these requests go back and forth, and it becomes a little bit, it becomes information that we didn't anticipate, then it could cost, um, I would say up to 5,000. I don't think it'll cost more than that.
Okay, the, what I'm fishing for here, I agree with Peter, I don't want to spend the money either, but I think we need to. What I don't want to do is make you have to come back here and endure another meeting for three hours to ask us for $3,000 or $5,000 on top of stuff that we all agree probably has to get paid anyway, and things like that, so I'm just looking for.
I would put a 10% on it, and, and I think that would compromise.
Well, so I'd round that out to 35,000 myself. If someone were to make that motion, I'd be willing to support that.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the town council approved to pay certain consultants to assist the town with the challenges of San Cobain's New Hampshire Department of Environmental Air, um, Department of Environmental Services air permit not to exceed $35,000.
Second.
So motion's made by Bill and seconded by Barbara. Does anybody have any more comments?
I, I want us to win this, I really do. Go get them, exactly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstaining? Pass is 7-0-0.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Sarita.
Thank you. Appreciate your, your presentation here. Which brings us all the way to new business. We're, we're moving with speed now. Um, number one, longest day, 2020 proclamation, fifth annual hot, New Hampshire Hot Dogs, submitted by Robert Bergen, who doesn't appear to be here tonight.
He wasn't able to make it tonight.
Pardon?
He was not able to.
I'm sorry, he was not able to make it tonight. He basically just wanted you to, uh, read the proclamation, uh, and endorse it.
Somebody's got it, does somebody have it?
Mr. Chairman, I've got it right here.
Oh.
Peter, um, raised his hand first.
I was going to say, I, you have, you guys have read this quite a bit tonight.
Why don't you read it, Peter? That'd be great.
Okay. Uh, Town of Merrimack Town Council proclamation, National Alzheimer's Longest Day, the longest day, August 6th, 2020. Whereas Alzheimer's disease, a progressive degenerative brain disease, and the most common form of dementia, that tragically robs individuals of their memories and leads to progressive mental and physical impairments, and whereas there are no known treatments to prevent, cure, or even delay the onset, or slow the progression of Alzheimer's disease, and whereas every 65 seconds, someone in the United States develops Alzheimer's disease, with the disease being the sixth leading cause of death in the United States. And whereas between 2000 and 2018, deaths from heart disease have decreased 7.8%, while deaths from Alzheimer's disease have increased 146%. And whereas more than 5 million Americans are living with Alzheimer's, and by 2050, this number is projected to rise to nearly 14 million. And whereas the early detection and diagnosis, individuals and their families can gain access to medications and management strategies that may temporarily improve symptoms, and whereas there is a need to raise awareness about Alzheimer's disease and to honor all of the caregivers who support and care for loved ones with the disease. Now, therefore, it will be resolved that we, the town council of the town of Merrimack, hereby proclaim August 6th, 2020, as the longest day in Merrimack, and stand in support of the 5th Annual New Hampshire Hot Dogs Stand fundraising event taking place on August 6th in the Our Lady of Mercy Church parking lot.
Thank you, Peter.
Someone, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, so this proclamation is moved by Bill, seconded by Barbara. Um, do you want to speak to it, Bill?
I think Peter did a great job explaining the reasons why we are offering this proclamation. I mean, it's a great opportunity for the community to be, it's, shouldn't use the word exposed, but to be educated and, uh, repurposed as to some of the families that have loved ones that are struggling with this disease. So I think it's a great opportunity to, to be educated and at the same time, support a good cause. Thank you.
Anybody else? So having been impacted by Alzheimer's, this is very close and dear to my heart. Uh, I was a little surprised to see it come up, and, uh, I, I think it's important to point out that normally this would have been, uh, occurring on or around June 21st, which is longest day of the year, um, which is where this longest day came from. Alzheimer's is a very long day for the individual affected, but also for all of their family. Um, if you haven't been directly affected by it, you might not know, but, uh, when, when people lose their memories, to the extent that they don't recognize their children, and they don't recognize their husband, uh, they don't recognize their surroundings, every day is a new day for them, but it's only a new day because they have nothing else to compare it against. Um, and for the family that's dealing with that, it's, it's tragic. I can almost say it was a benefit for myself that I was, uh, far away from home when my mother came down with Alzheimer's. Uh, and, uh, being here in New England and her in Louisiana, I, I didn't have to face the daily struggles that my sisters did, uh, where one sister would be accused of trying to steal my mom's husband from her, uh, and things like that, because she didn't know or understand. I mean, it's a, it's a tragic disease, and so I, I very much appreciate the efforts that Bob Bergen and the Alzheimer's community does, or the anti-Alzheimer's community does, uh, to try and raise that awareness, and I hope that, uh, the town of Merrimack will support them and understand those situations that are coming in. It, I probably should be aware already, but to find out it's the seventh leading cause of death and, or sixth leading cause of death in the United States, and we're talking about 5 million people living with it, and 114, or 14 million in the next, uh, 20, 30 years, uh, it needs, we need to find a, a resolution, an understanding of it, and so anything. And so anything that I can do and anything that we can do, I hope we would all do to try and help support that. Having spoken my piece, um, all those in favor of the proclamation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? That passes seven zero zero. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for sharing that. That was, um, well taken. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Interestingly, I lost my mom eleven years ago. And the, uh, this is a short anecdotal story, if you'll let me know. Um, the church, St. John Newman, gave my family a plant in memory, uh, when she passed away. And it's one of those easy to grow plants, and I've had it in my office almost ever since. Interestingly, with COVID nineteen, I haven't been able to go to my office for four months. And I went there yesterday, uh, Monday, for the first time in four months. And the plant had been there by itself. To my knowledge, nobody's been paying attention to it, but, uh, it was still green. About seventy-five percent of it was still green. There was quite a few dead leaves around it, but, uh, it's still doing well. So I doused it with a whole ton of water and brought some pieces home to try and transplant, just in case. But, yeah, it's interesting. Okay. Moving along. Number two under new business, consideration of changes to chapter one eighty-three vehicles and traffic of the Merrimack Town Code. First reading, the town council to consider the acceptance of recommended changes to chapter one eighty-three vehicles and traffic of the Merrimack Town Code, adding section one eighty-three twenty-four B, resident-only parking areas pursuant to charter article five. This is something we tried to do off the cuff last time to decide that there would be specific fines uh, if we passed the Merrimack-only resident parking, uh, that we would apply certain fines to people that violate those. And we had quite a bit of discussion last time, uh, and, and went round and round and came up with some numbers of, I think, fifty, a hundred, and a hundred and fifty dollars per fines for second and third for violation of this. But our attorneys felt that actually putting fines into it, where it was an actual physical cost, was too substantiative a change, and so we couldn't live with, we couldn't move forward with that piece of the ordinance change until we had a, a quote-unquote, um, noticed first reading that specifically talked about doing that. So that's what this is. We're not talking about adding back in the section that we talked about last time. Uh, section B, any person, firm, or corporation violating the provisions of sub-paragraph A shall, for each violation and conviction thereof, pay a fine of fifty dollars for the first such offense, one hundred for the second such offense, and a hundred and fifty dollars for each offense thereafter. So that's the first reading. Eileen?
Uh, this actually becomes moot now that, when we get to the next item, because we, it's in the fine schedule.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So we'll just move along to the next one, okay? The fine schedule?
It's okay with me. Is everybody happy with that? Are we, are we done with not moving forward with the eighty-three dash twenty-four B?
I'm just putting these things on and seeing which one stick to the wall, so.
Didn't stick to the wall. All right. So, next on our agenda, thank you folks, um, is, uh, section three, number three under new business, uh, the town council to discuss and consider the adoption of a parking fine schedule. Eileen, you want to jump in here before I put my foot in my mouth again?
Sure. Um, so after much ado, um, we, um, found that there was a method by which the town council in two meetings could adopt a schedule of fines, um, that didn't require the normal process for a, um, ordinance change, because it doesn't change the ordinance, it just clarifies the ordinance. So there's a section of the, um, of the code that says, uh, something like up to five hundred dollars, um, the, the fine will be, but it doesn't specify how much it is. Well, this is, um, this is specifying it. So I've given each one of you, unfortunately, you just got them, um, tonight, but I've given you, uh, a proposed fine schedule. Uh, so basically, it's kind of like the one that Paul was talking about, that we had at one time, um, years ago, but we couldn't find. Uh, so, um, this fine schedule, uh, is, will e- be fairly easy to change when you'd like to. Um, all it requires is to read it like we will tonight, discuss it, you guys decide what you want to do, you move it on to the public hearing, and you can vote at that very next meet, at that same meeting that the public hearing is held, to enact it. So, um, what we did was, as you probably can see in chapter one eighty-three, there's many, many things in here. There's violations for, there's speed limits, there's, um, you know, things about the stop, you know, what, what's a fine for a stop sign violation, or a yield sign violation. And all of that is covered in this whole thing. So, um, what we did was, and I should say the police, um, department did, was went through the, um, the, the whole ordinance to see which of those parking, uh, topics were not covered under state law. And, um, and wrote them down here. There's one, two, three, four, five. And we, uh, have some proposed, uh, fine amounts. Uh, deputy chief, uh, police chief Le- Vake called around to some other communities to find out what their, um, fines were. And, uh, so put, so we put them in here, um, with their recommendation. The only thing that's, that you, um, the, the, the one that Tom was just talking about earlier, just, just a few minutes ago, uh, the residence-only parking, it's only listed here for fifty dollars. We didn't put a second and third, but if you want to, you know, if you, you want to revisit that, but that's that one. So, um, you can make changes to any of the amounts, um, obviously, in whatever ma- manner that you want. And does that, is that clear? Is that fairly clear?
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody have any thoughts on this? Nancy?
Just a question. Um, I noticed London Dairy has separates our handicap parking violation. What would that be for us? Just under the state?
Yeah, we would do the state one. It's, um, well, actually, it's covered under, um, one eighty-three nineteen. If you look at one eighty-three nineteen, it's listed under there.
Really?
Um, but the thing is, the, um, the police department can, can decide to use the state one, which they would do, which I believe is two hundred and fifty dollars.
That's exactly what I was going to propose, is that, because it should be really high.
Well, we, well, we wanted to make it fairly simple, um, because, um, we, we didn't want to have to list every single thing that was under one eighty-three nineteen. Um, because the only thing that wasn't included that would be covered under the state, under one eighty-three nineteen, is that handicapped parking. Which is, a, a police officer, if they saw a person, um, parked in a handicapped spot without their, um, decal, they would charge them two hundred and fifty dollars as, or if that's what the state is.
Actually, according to this, it's three hundred and ten.
Three, three ten. Wow.
Which is appropriate, in my opinion.
Sorry. Did it all one. Okay, yeah, it is. So.
Okay, so, all of these things are automatic unless we specify, unique ones?
Yes.
Yes?
It took you a while to get that yes out.
That's right.
Okay. Any other comments? So I, I think we should add the second and third violations to the resident parking after all the information, all the stuff we went through last time. So a second, second offense would be?
Seventy-five, didn't we say? What did we say?
It was, it was-
Fifty-one hundred, one fifty.
Yeah. Fifty-one hundred, one fifty is what we put in-
One hundred and one fifty.
Finally, last time, yeah. Which we just breezed through that.
Right. Okay, so it was fifty, one hundred, one fifty?
Fifty, a hundred, and one fifty.
Okay.
Is that all right with everybody? I think it is too, but I don't, you know.
Remember there was a discussion?
We had quite the discussion.
Remember there was a discussion about the first time, you know?
If I forget, I'll forget what she just said in like two seconds. So, um, can we just, when you do the, the third offense, can you just put subsequent rather than third offense?
Sure.
Okay. So I'm sorry, Peter. And poor Peter's sitting over in the, um, in the bad boy seat over there.
No, I just have to look that way, that's all I can see him.
It just wants to let you know, he hasn't done anything wrong. But we, uh, we're going to have to switch, switch that person out, um, once a week, because we don't have the space to make sure everybody's six feet apart. So just keep in mind, whoever's sitting over in that seat needs to be acknowledged, even though they're, well.
That's, that's funny, Eileen, because the, the chairman told me this was the timeout because I missed the last meeting. Um, no, I just, a quick question, and did I, I might have missed it during the conversation just now, but, so, we're gonna double and triple the fines for which offenses, or?
For one eighty-three twenty-four resident-only parking.
So, I know that we're increasing some of these other fines.
Right.
Um, yeah, for consistency? Should we double and triple these other fines if there's second and third offenses, or?
I don't, I, I-
No?
I'm not sure I think so, but, but I'm, I'm certainly willing to listen to what you want to recommend. I don't think we need to be consistent there. We just, we, we wanted, if people are going to be crazy about parking on areas that we've designated resident-only, I think they need to get whacked to make sure they understand. The, the all-night parking in the winter, twenty-five dollar fine, if somebody feels like they need to park there and create problems, maybe we should increase that. I don't know if they, if they make it a consistent thing, but.
And, and you know, that's a situation where we could tow a car also, so. All-night park, you know, the winter parking ban kind of thing.
And then they have to pay for the towing charges and storage charges and all that.
Yeah, which I'm, I'm sensing that that's going to be a very lucrative business in Merrimack as time goes on, when, with all these people parking in the wrong parking lots and, um, things like that.
I don't know. I don't want to get the reputation Nashua has, but, um, where they tow them down to Massachusetts and then really whack them.
Yeah, you don't have to do it too many times.
Yeah.
I bet the guy, I bet the guy they towed for, you know, that had to pay three hundred dollars, um, ignoring the kid down at Watson Park.
Three hundred, is it a cost?
Oh, yeah. So, anyway, I bet he won't do it again.
I would hope not. Okay, so, um, right now we have the fines as proposed, with the addition of the hundred and the one fifty for the second offense and subsequent offenses under one eighty-three dash twenty-four. Does anybody else have any other thoughts or suggestions? Shall we move this forward?
Tom?
To a public hearing?
Um, may I just ask you, uh, I, I didn't thoroughly read what, what Carrie said, but is there something else in there that she wants you to do? Would you just take a look at it? I think I handed all mine out, but if you ju-
Is that this one?
Yeah. Could you just take a look at it and make sure that we're using the proper language?
Everybody's got the council, everybody has copies. PD has based these, um, just enough for public discussion. Once in the final format, we'll proceed to a certain public hearing. At the public hearing, the public can weigh in, and copies of the minutes and the adopted schedule must be on file. I think we're good.
All right, great. So I just want to make sure that you, you probably should read this.
Read what?
Publicly, what the fines are.
Okay. From the town of Merrimack, parking fines scheduled, part of Town Code, chapter one eighty-three. Uh, the violation for a one eighty-three dash sixteen all-night parking in winter would be a twenty-five dollar fine. Uh, one eighty-three dash eighteen, impeding snow removal would be a fifty dollar fine. One eighty-three dash nineteen, parking prohibited at all times, would be a twenty-five dollar fine. One eighty-three dash twenty, overnight parking would be a twenty-five dollar fine. And then one eighty-three dash twenty-four, resident-only parking would be a fifty dollar fine for the first offense. The second offense would be a hundred dollars, and any subsequent offense would be a hundred and fifty dollars. And this would need to be moved to a public hearing, and after the public hearing, we could vote to adopt this. Let me just ask one other question. Eileen, and I don't know if we're bringing it up again, you had wanted at one point to change one eighty-one to increase the fine for emergency, uh, no parking areas. Is that covered in this, or?
No, it's not. Um, it's in a different chapter. It's in chapter one eighty-one, so-
So it won't be covered by this sheet?
Right. So as, uh, I hadn't said this before, but, um, it should have come to a public hearing tonight to change it from twenty-five dollars to seventy-five dollars, but it was inadvertently left off the posting. So that second reading or public hearing for that, um, emergency ordinance will be at the next meeting.
And it's already going forward because we sent it to a public hearing at our last meeting, so we don't have to discuss it again.
That's right. Right.
Perfect. Wanted to make sure I understood where that's due. Any other comments or questions? Um, if you want to move to adopt this, or to move to send it to a public hearing?
So moved.
Anybody? Nancy, thank you. Seconded by Barbara. Nancy second, uh, Nancy moved to, uh, send this parking fine schedule to a public hearing. Barbara seconded it. Uh, all those, if there's anybody, if there's no other comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? That passes seven zero zero. The date certain?
Yes.
Is our next meeting in two weeks, is that right?
Well, it's the twentieth right now. You haven't said anything.
The next meeting is the twentieth? We have?
Yes.
Okay. When's our next meeting? Uh, you're right, I remember. When do we want to have a public hearing? For this and one eighty-one?
We could do it as early as the sixth of August.
We want to do it the sixth. We could do it the sixth. That wouldn't really matter. What's the desire of the council? Mar- uh, Eileen?
I think the real issue is, the next meeting is going to be when there's some kind of a definitive action taken on the residence-only parking and the, um, and the parking on one side of the street. Uh, so I think that you had talked about having one two weeks from tonight, uh, to get that matter resolved. I don't know if that's still the case or not.
Would be the sixth of August? Hot dog day, but the hot dogs typically are before seven. They tend to run out. They tend to run out by seven. Um, are we okay with calling a meeting for August sixth?
I love you guys.
What?
I love you guys.
What, you know? We, we thought we were going to have time off during the summer, but-
Not this summer.
Nope.
Not, not this one, no. We have too much time with COVID nineteen on our hands, sitting around the house anyway.
We'll remember this year for many reasons.
For many reasons. I'm not seeing any argument against, so we'll plan on scheduling it for August sixth. I'll have to explain that one to my family. Being my daughter's birthday, but not a problem. Um, okay, so now we can move forward? Consider it. Consideration of changes to chapter eighty-three vehicles and traffic of the Merrimack Town Code, first reading. Town council to consider recommended changes to chapter eighty, one eighty-three vehicles and traffic to revise the wording on Hadley Road, to prohibit vehicles from parking on Hadley Road during school hours, seven AM to four PM on school days. This was submitted by Director of Public Works, Deputy Director of Public Works, Don Twala. I knew there was a reason you were sticking with us, Don.
I know.
It's like the old days, Tom, isn't it?
Yeah.
Good time. We've been-
We're having way too much fun.
Tom and I, we're together, we used to go midnight, one o'clock in the morning, right?
You could've.
We have done that before, yeah. Well, that and the planning board with the EPL.
Planning board, yeah.
I guess to support the changes to traffic issues. No, just number three that I forgot all about was added in.
This should be, I shouldn't say, oh curses.
Don't curse it, yeah.
Oh curses. In fact, I, I drove down Hadley on the way here.
You did, it's not on the way here.
It's right down the street.
Well, I know, but it's not on the way here.
Well, if you come up Woodbury, it is, the way Nancy drives, it is. If I came up, I came up Woodbury, I went, oh, there it is.
And then looped around Hadley on your way.
So do the high school students park there, is that a problem?
Apparently they do, yeah.
The answer is no.
Well, that's why they're even putting school restrictions on.
Yes.
Okay, Don.
Thank you, I apologize, um, I do have the chief with us tonight.
Backup?
And, yes.
Two chiefs and a, and a captain.
And John Manuel. They're, they're all here to, for this, uh, Hadley Road. So Hadley Road is a small... Small section, um, off of McKelwyn, and it's just before the high school, so if you look up here, this is the high school. And the area that we're having an issue with is the section of Hadley Road, um, around through here. So, we've been dealing with this for a couple of years, and we've tried a number of different things, and it hasn't worked. Last winter, um, it became very apparent that we were having some issues. The fire department can't get through when the kids are parking during school hours. So our request was to have this whole section of Hadley Road, no parking from seven AM to four PM during the school days. And we brought this before the Highway Safety Committee, and this is what they voted and agreed upon. Oops, uh, this isn't, this is just a blow-up of that area. The, I did do some pictures, but they're not, how come it's taking two of them at the same time? Sorry, I don't run Max, um, but anyway, I tried to get the snowplow down, and with the cars on the side, you, he can't, he has to pull his, all his equipment in, so it's very difficult because the fire trucks are of equal size, and then the police, we've tried getting them out of there, and it just doesn't work. So, this is the code, and we would like to change the code to read, um, I have to have glasses, from, it used to read south entrance of Hadley Road, on the south side of the road for a distance of four hundred feet. We would like to have that changed to read on both sides of Hadley Road, the entire length during school hours of seven AM to four PM. And, like I said, we did bring this before the Highway Safety Committee. And I don't know if you want them to speak a little bit more to it, but I did show the plow trucks not getting through, so. It's, it's very difficult, and we have tried to work, and we haven't been able to resolve anything.
Eileen?
Uh, just, uh, so, what happens when it's not in the wintertime and it's not between school hours? There's unlimited parking, people can park wherever they want and, on both sides and all that kind of thing. Or have you modified the language to add this language? See what I'm saying?
Yes, I see what you're saying. So I believe the problem was in the, the southern section here, and that was the four hundred feet originally, that was no parking along that side. Um, so if that were left and then add the additional, then that would be the case.
All right, I don't have what you're adding, I don't know why. The section that covers this doesn't include the, the literal changes to one eighty-three, twenty-six, thirty-six.
It says right here, prohibited parking at all times, it's changed from the south entrance, it goes to continue the entire length during school hours.
Okay, and what Eileen was just asking about was that includes wintertime and non-wintertime?
Yes, and not, but not taking out that first section, leaving that first section in and just putting and entire length during school hours.
So I still don't have what you want to put in there. So you still want to say south entrance of Hadley Road on the south side of the street for a distance of four hundred feet and the entire length during school hours?
Yes, I believe we should leave that in there, for the reason she was...
Okay, and...
The, the south, so they want to leave, we want to leave this, no parking on the south side?
I get it, okay.
During school hours, right.
Right. The entire length.
Right.
We could say both sides.
On both sides.
Entire length on both sides during school hours. Peter?
Don, there's what, twelve residences on this road? Have you contacted or been contacted by any of these folks regarding this?
Yes, there were two different people that came in to us, and I believe one of them came into the Highway Safety Committee meeting and actually spoke before the meeting.
Okay. And do you know how many signs we're gonna need to post?
Four hundred feet, so one, two... Probably about twenty?
Twenty?
Possibly, well, no, that would be one, two, three, four, six. And no parking.
Like fourteen or something?
Yeah, twelve, I was gonna say twelve, yep, sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Twelve.
Twelve, okay, thank you.
Because you need to post both sides.
Yes.
Now, how many of these people are gonna want to have guests come to parties at their house?
During school hours, I don't know. But this was at their request, plus the emergencies.
It's late, Tom.
No, I'm serious, that, not necessarily guests, but commercial...
Makes your point.
Um, contractors or something like that, that, we're not, we're not saying non-Merrimack, or Merrimack residents only, we're saying no parking, period. Pardon?
No, she's being facetious too.
She's being a wise guy.
I, I get that, but I, you know...
It came to our...
I didn't expect some of the blowback we got on this past one because so many people were saying they wanted it. And now, do people want this, and how many of the rest?
There were, there was an elderly person that lives down behind it, and I guess one of the issues was they couldn't get to help her.
So seven to four is the entire day, effectively?
During the day.
Finley?
Yeah, that's, I did want to address the time, typically when we've done something, because there used to be signage that we changed a couple of years ago, it was always till three, I thought, um, I didn't know why you chose to four. I, I don't know if the highway, I don't think the Highway Safety Committee did that, um, nobody called that and tell us.
I don't know if I have the minutes of the meeting right.
Okay, yeah, so, well, I'm just contemplating bringing it back to three if we could, um, but, and I just wanted, for clarity to myself, it's that south portion, no parking year-round, and when it comes around the corner, it's just during school, uh, when school's in session. Yep.
What, what is the south portion, the closest to the school?
Yes.
Why is that special?
Because you, coming around the corner, um, in general, um, I mean, the kids park the whole route, but when there's no school, it's just an awkward place for parking, uh, if you, Nancy's been on it, I know.
It's very tight.
I mean, it looks like the whole street is tight, all the corners would be tight. Can you come up and do a mic? Thank you, appreciate it.
I was hoping to avoid it.
I, I got some complaints myself last, uh, last winter, and I went out and measured the road, and the actual pavement is only fifteen feet wide, and there's a choke point between a fence and a telephone pole of about twenty feet. But I had a little difficulty getting my Explorer through there when there was snowbanks on each side, and there was no way we were gonna fit an ambulance or, or an engine or a fire, or especially a ladder truck through there. So it, it definitely does get, um, extremely tight, and depending on how big the car that they're parking, how close they're parking to the snowbank, it's, it's virtually impossible to get through anything.
But, so my question was the south side, that south piece for three hundred feet is, is that critical? And the rest is okay?
Most of the street is actually pretty tight, but the section, the south side, is the tightest portion of the road.
How, how far does three hundred feet go from McKelwyn? Around the corner or all the way halfway around?
It's pretty much that whole length up to the first corner.
Up to the first corner?
Is that what I, and that corner was tight also.
Three hundred feet would just be two house lots, yeah.
Right. And then there's another point further up on the, uh, on the piece that runs straight north and south that is also tight, so.
That's where one of the pictures I took, and the yellow picture was up here in this point up here.
Yeah. Okay, so that, so, so that's the piece that has no parking any time?
This side down here.
Right.
Presently.
Down there, three hundred feet, which goes to about there, yeah.
Right.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm not gonna try and add anything to it at this point. Anybody else have anything else they want to add to this or talk, let's go with Barbara first?
So if, 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 if it's so tight in several different areas of the road, are we really solving the problem? And what is the final wording, uh, for the changes here, because I'm still confused about what that is? The page I have just has a lot of cross-outs, but I'm not sure what the actual wording is.
So we're going to keep the south entrance...
Excuse me.
Of Hadley Road on the south side of the street for a distance that's four hundred feet, that's what was there. And for the entire length during school hours of seven AM to three PM on both sides of the road.
And that's when traffic will, that's when parking will be?
The, the problem is during the school hours, it's the school kids, and other than that, they don't have an issue that I know of, they have not complained out there.
Didn't we just say that there was an issue, that parking was tight, trying to get the vehicles through anyways?
During school hours, when the school kids are parked, they park everywhere, and they park more in the street because there isn't parking along the side, there isn't the room for them to pull off. So they're basically on the street.
So if we just address the complaint, then we get out of here a little sooner. Peter, did you have some comment?
I'm just, it's the first reading, right?
Yes.
And maybe that we can put on the website, you know, attention Hadley Road residents for the next public hearing, so if they should read that, they'll know this is going on and come on in and make a comment at the next meeting, so.
Or, or should we just send them a note to tell them that the public hearing is coming up?
Send them a note.
Only, I would prefer, I would prefer that.
Yep.
Okay, so we ready to move this to a public hearing? On the sixth? So moved by, by Finley?
Yes.
And who seconded it? Nancy did. Moved by Finley and seconded by Nancy to move the, um, Hadley Road change to s, to one eighty-three dash thirty-six to a public hearing. Being both sides of the road, the south entrance of Hadley Road on the south side of the street for a distance of four hundred feet and the entire length of the street during school hours from seven AM to... Did we move that to three or did we? To three PM? Good, so all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? That passes seven zero zero to go to a public hearing on the sixth of August.
Thank you.
Okay. Just in case we change anything here. Um, that brings us to minutes. Are we ready to do minutes at quarter of eleven?
I'd like to make the motion to accept the minutes of Thursday, June twenty-fifth, as written.
Motion by Nancy and seconded by Peter to accept the minutes as presented, written.
And I read them and I didn't see anything.
Oh, I didn't either, which is... Any other comments or suggestions about the minutes of June twenty-fifth? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? That passes seven zero zero. I was paying attention, just didn't look like it. Minutes of July ninth, twenty-twenty?
I'd like to move the minutes of Thursday, July ninth, two thousand twenty, as presented.
Moved by Nancy and seconded by...
Sir.
Peter?
And I did not see, I did not see anything.
To move the minutes of July ninth, nine, uh, twenty-twenty? Any changes? Barbara?
The only thing I saw on page twelve is a really big space there.
A big statement?
Space.
Space.
It's like...
Or statement, I love it.
Yeah, yeah, it could be a statement at this point. So maybe just tighten that up a little bit.
Oh, that space.
That space.
Lines fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen? I saw something in one of these, now I remember, I forgot to dog ear it, so I have... My hands are so dry, I can't even turn pages. Where did it go? Probably in the one we just approved. Yep, that's where it was, okay, never mind. It wasn't important. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor of the minutes of July ninth with maybe a space or two taken out of page twelve. Signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Seven zero zero. Abstaining, Peter's abstaining, that passes six zero one with Peter Albert abstaining. Just didn't like us, huh?
No, I wasn't there.
No, I know.
That's why we all showed up tonight.
It's a great idea, I'll keep that in mind for future ones. And I'll make by myself over there soon enough, so. That brings us to comments from the press, comments from the public, comments from the council. I would just, I would just say, go ahead, my, my, uh, public service announcement that we're still in the middle of this COVID-19 pandemic, we don't want, um, New Hampshire to come up on the list of those states that are naughty and having big increases, so I, I commend you for your efforts at social distancing, at, uh, wearing a mask, at doing all those things to keep yourselves healthy, washing your hands, sanitizing your hands, whatever it takes, um, it's still an ongoing problem, we are still maintaining limited seating here at the council chambers, we appreciate the fact that, uh, people have written in to us and, and made efforts to join in. You are welcome to come, we are asking people to continue their social distancing, and we are asking, well, we are setting up, I think, the additional conference room with TV coverage, um, if we should get crowded in here, and then you could come over during public comments and space out down the hall or, or find a space inside or something like that, so, um, we do encourage you to attend our meetings, um, we do want to hear from the public, we're not trying to avoid you, we're keeping ourselves spread out, we're trying to be safe, uh, and we ask that you do that as well. So thank you very much for your cooperation and assistance. And if that's all... We have a motion adjourned by Nancy, seconded by Barbara. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Eileen, your vote doesn't count. Seven zero zero, we're abstain, we're adjourned. Thank you, we're abstained.
Merrimack TV is committed to our community. From gavel-to-gavel coverage of town and school board meetings to updates on town services and projects, we aim to keep you connected.
Uh, good morning, I'm Kyle Fox, Public Works Director for the town of Merrimack.
Hi, I'm Diane Trippett, I'm the Town Clerk Tax Collector for the town of Merrimack.
I'm Captain Matt Tarleton with the Merrimack New Hampshire Police Department.
And keep the public informed of every motion?
All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye?
And many moments, so you can be confident that we're here for you. Thanks for watching. Stay connected, follow Merrimack. Follow Merrimack TV on Facebook.